I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Abington School Committee on Tuesday, October 28th, here at the Abington Town Hall. If everybody's able, we're gonna rise in a second.
(inaudible)
And then I'm gonna read the Abington Public Schools' mission statement. The mission of the Abington Public Schools is to provide all students with the relevant, challenging educational experiences to prepare them to be engaged, responsible citizens, and members of the global community. And then, I'm actually gonna speak on order, and I don't think anyone will mind, like to, just as for my fellow committee members, I think they'll allow me to say a very big, tremendous thank you to all that were involved in the process of the new school vote. The support of the Abington community has been amazing. Thank you.
Just wanna tell everyone how driven we're gonna be to build the best school possible for the Abington community. The kids that we serve, I'm humbled and appreciative of the support and the faith that this community has had in us to do a good job with this, and that's exactly what we're gonna do. This is a, I, in my, from my perspective, is such a tremendously positive step forward for the community of Abington, and I'm just excited about just building a great school for Abington, so. And also, wanna invite people to be a part of that process. We're gonna keep that website going, the www.AbingtonA-B-S-ASBC, www.ASBC.us, so that people can see exactly what's happening in their community as this school is built. Continue to have people ask questions and get answers, and then give input along the way. It's community building for our kids in Abington, I'm just excited, so.
Yeah, I just, I just, as someone who's grown up in Abington, lived here my whole life, I just, you know, the people of Abington, you know, I never doubted them, they stepped up and supported this wholeheartedly, and I just think it's, it's wonderful for the, you know, the coming generations, and I just wanna thank everybody that, you know, participated in, and I look forward to Peter's leadership as we open a new school.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to thank the town of Abington residents for voting for this, and one of the priorities of the school committee will be to bring this forward for the next three years.
And I'd like to thank ABC for all of the work that they did in helping us to get this vote.
Thanks.
Thank you. And now, at this point, we're gonna have the hearing of any visitors. So next, we move on to the reading and approval of the records from September 23rd.
I just have one thing on the page two, the last sentence, either the last sentence on page two or the first sentence on page three is a duplicate. So we just need to strike one of those. And then, I don't know, last month, I provided a listing of the, I don't know if we need that, 'cause that didn't get submitted with the package that was presented, I mean, I don't know if we wanna make that a part of the record, just in case you need another copy.
I've got one here, actually. If you need this one, you can take this one, doesn't it?
I just brought that, just in case it's, 'cause it wasn't part of the package, so.
Yep.
That's all we have.
Any other questions? So we'll be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of September 23rd as presented or amended.
Someone?
I'll second it.
Next, we move on to our report of the subcommittees. First one we have is the update from the School Committee Governance Subcommittee, which is Paul Hagerty and Kathy Bailey.
And everybody should've gotten a copy of the results of the work we did, and as I was going through it, this meeting tonight to draw your attention to some things, I thought it might be easy if people actually knew what page numbers things were on, so I just photocopied the front pages and put page numbers on it, so that when we talk about it, we can actually, don't have to go shuffling through everything. I wanted to draw everyone's attention to, actually, page 23. And, the reason I did that is one of the things that we do have in this document is an outline for how school committee policy will be adopted, and you'll notice at the bottom, numbers one, two, and three, you first get any new policy in the form as of an information item, and it's distributed with the agenda. The second time you look at it, which would be our next meeting, would be a discussion item, and then, the third time we see it would be an action item to discuss, adopt, and object, and, or reject. All of the, this is what Paul and I agreed on and put together, and we're presenting it to you with the idea that we think this is what our governance and operations should look like. It's now up to the committee to look at it, decide if they wanna accept everything that's in it, whether they wanna make changes to it. It's a lengthy document, a lot of very important information, some things are changed from the way that we have done things in the past, other things are pretty common. So we looked at a number of different documents of other school systems. Paul actually put together a document that we then used as our base, and went through, and changed, and tried to update and make it appropriate for Abington. So, Paul, if you wanna add anything?
No, I think that, I just, you know, I think we need, there's a, there's a lot here, and to try to digest it in the three or four days, to Mike's point from last time, that there's a lot here that maybe we, we can carry this over to next month if there's to have further discussion on things, to give you, I mean, 'cause Kathy and I spent months going through this, and just to be fair to everybody, that, you know, how everything in here sort of nets together. But, you know, I, I don't, you know, I think it's a, it's a solid document, it's, it's, we're not going beyond what I think the state or the MAS-C would want us to do, we try to stay within that boundaries, but also, to Kathy's point, fit what Abington needs. But I, you know, if, we need more time to go through it, 'cause there is, there is a lot here. I mean, technically, there's 43 policies. They'll double, they'll, that's a hundred percent increase from where we are right now, on policy count.
Just so I can thank Paul and Kathy for the work that they did on this, because MAS-C charges thousands of dollars for to, to do an entire district review, it's about $10,000. This is a portion, an important portion, of a district's policies, and so this is something that has languished, and Abington has been trying to get to, but we've always had something better to do with those thousands of dollars in terms of direct service to kids. And so they're doing this work, and like the work of all the policy discussions that we have, and you'll notice in here that school committee members don't get paid, one of the sections talks about that, and so I just wanted to say how much I appreciate that work for free.
Yeah, I did have a chance to do a cursory view of it, and you guys did put a lot of effort and work into it, so we're appreciative of that, and I think we should go forward trying to review this, and...
Yeah, that's why we just wanna try to be respectful of your time and, you know, trying to go through it, and, you know, we, we're confident in it, but to be fair to everybody, just to give you a chance to review it, so, you know, if we have a chance...
Also, we should make note that this has been reviewed by council, so everything in here is legal.
So the only thing that wasn't in your, isn't a part of this one document, are two, do you wanna talk about the two other policies?
Yeah, there's, well, there's one policy, but with two different versions on remote participation. We didn't include it in, in the original draft, and it hasn't been reviewed by council. But the only difference between draft one and draft two is participation, remote participation and executive session, one has it in, and the other one does not. When pulling this together, looking at other districts and how they handle it, some allow it, some don't, so that's why I kinda did it either way.
We also, also, the reason it's not in your original document is we had to check to see what the wording was in the selectmen's vote on allowing it, because it was up to each town whether they wanted to allow remote participation or not. The selectmen did approve remote participation, but then it is again up to us how we wanna deal with that, so it's kind of an important piece to look at.
Yeah, so it's either nothing, full, or without executive session.
So we have three options.
Right, yes.
Okay.
And video conferencing would be an option, because it just, it would be, I think it's very difficult for, to get that video conferencing down with somebody actually having a laptop or some type of video conferencing software that would allow us to video conference into this, into this particular conference room.
Yeah, it's, yeah, and that's why on number four, the acceptable means of remote participation is conference telephone or any other technology that is available, 'cause that way it gives us options if, 'cause others have specifically, to Mike's point about video conferencing, and it's like, we don't know what we're gonna have, you know, what's available here, and then we go into a new facility in three years, we could be meeting there, so it kinda left it general that a conference telephone call is sort of standard, and then from there, if we can build on technology, then we can, but leave it as simple as possible right now.
So, we're following agreement, but we don't need some time to look through this.
I think so.
A lot of work, a lot of work. So, just one motion, maybe. And if anybody had any questions or comments?
Oh, can I just, on this, you know, what Kathy was talking about, is it possible to post this on the website just for, if we want public comment or anything like that, just for people to review it? I mean, I know it's part of the package, so it's a public document, it's out there, I don't know if we wanted to put it under the school committee section just for, you know, as a draft, in draft form, if anybody wanted to read it beforehand, I don't know if that's something we wanna consider.
If the committee wants to do that, I can do that, I just appreciate the, you know, where you would like, if you decide to do it, where you'd like it would be good to know.
Well, we got a school committee section right under the, we could just, you know, if there's a section under there, we could put it.
Should it be posted before a vote of the school committee?
But as long as it's, as it's draft, if we mark it as draft, though, because to your point on page 23, distribution, first reading of proposed policy, voting from the superintendent, voting from the subcommittee assigned, committee discussion and redirection, you know, I'd look at discussion items, I mean, we develop policies here, and I think it is good to get, you know, participation from the community, if there's anything in here that they would be concerned about.
I mean, I don't have any problem with that, my only concern is that something be posted on the website, somebody read it, then later on, we change it, and someone's gonna say, "Well, I read that on your website, it said that it was this." So it would have to be very obvious that it was a draft, that it had not yet been voted, if that's gonna, if that's gonna take place, 'cause I would hate to have people get a misconception and then something, you know, be changed when we come to discussion and a vote.
The only thing that we'll say, if it goes out there as PDF, if someone were to pull this up and they said, you know, "You've got this, there's no policy adopted, there's no date there," so if someone were to bring that up, it's like, well, we haven't, we never voted on that, so to me, this isn't adopted, and to your point, until we vote it, and then that gets marked in there.
Well, we could put it up there in PDF, but with a, with a, with a draft, with a watermark.
Right.
Saying draft on it, and it'd be interesting to keep count, maybe Rich can keep count of how many hits actually go to that particular area on the webpage.
Right.
Just to see who actually, if anybody actually is looking at it.
Right.
Other than maybe us here.
Breaking news.
I mean, I guess I don't have a problem with it either, but I think we need to make sure it comes out as a draft with the watermark on it, and in the PDF.
Yeah, 'cause we should have, we'll just put draft across each page and then make a PDF of it. And if, would we refer them, 'cause I know Ellen would love this, is refer them to have any questions or comments to the chair?
Maybe to the people who wrote it.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, so then it is one person handling any communication with the community. I'm just thinking of you, Ellen.
I know you are. That's fine, that's fine.
Oftentimes, people give it a window of time.
Yeah, just when they're, maybe we're going up.
So they, from such and such a date to such and such a date we're soliciting.
So, I guess if we wanna plan on trying to have this ready for the next meeting, then we should maybe make it a two-week window at most. I don't know how many weeks away is the next meeting, is it four or five?
Thanksgiving week.
Four. Probably don't wanna make it more than two weeks, because...
Yeah, limit it to two weeks?
Somebody wanna make a motion to post it for two weeks?
We have to make a motion to post it for two weeks in draft form?
Right, yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
As far as, do we, would, should we use like a constant contact, just let people know that it's out there? 'Cause otherwise, we just post it, they might not be aware, just...
We have a link that goes right to the website, so you just open the email link, and click on the link in the email, and it goes right to the website. Makes it easier. You can embed a link, you can embed a link in a...
Yes, we did it instead of A, yes. You all set?
Thank you.
So then, moving on, we have, next subcommittee is the policy review and update, which is Kathy Bailey and myself. Kathy just walked through a little bit of what's in the Governance Subcommittee's policy handbook here. We did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago, Kathy, myself, and Peter, and we walked through how the whole policy review comes, comes to happen. You know, we first get a draft or suggested policy is, arrives to us from either DESI, MAS-C, or MAS-S, and at this point, it's distributed to school administration as well as the full school committee, and we get a chance to take a look at it, provide feedback, comments, and this goes to the Policy Subcommittee, and at this point, we'll review, take a look at things. If necessary, it may end up having to go to our council, and then it comes back to the full committee for a vote. We also talked about the timing and the reviewing of different policies, and a lot of this has to relies on what's kinda current, the timing of when things are handed down to us from DESI, MAS-C, and MAS-S.
We are hoping to meet monthly to take a look at policy, but we're setting as a priority those new policy, these new recommendations and policies that come from the state. Basically, most of them are implemented by law, so law trumps policy, and it's something that we have to deal with immediately to get it in there. As we go through, our next step then is to take a look at policies that are, have not been reviewed within the last three years or so, and to work from there.
People have any questions?
Behind the scenes, just so that you know, there are times also that the professional organizations provide us professional development around, you know, for example, right now, we're talking about, we've been talking about chapter 222, which is the new discipline law, and so we do attend professional development that's provided on those items as they're available and as they're needed, depending on the policy. Doesn't preclude the committee from coming up with its own policy, those sources that Ellen mentioned are just, generally speaking, where most policy comes from, and those are derivatives from what the legislators hand down, so.
So, we discussed this last month, and I thought there was gonna be a plan of action, or, to quote Kathy, "plan of attack," and all we got was what we already knew. What's, what's new in this presentation from the subcommittee? I mean, how many, how many policies don't we have? How many policies does the district have? Where do we stand on that, and when are we gonna get this done? I asked that last month. Did we reach out to MAS-C?
We have spoken with MAS-C, everything that is listed on there, they have a, like a standard, standard policy notebook that you can purchase, or they can come out and work with you on developing, or that you can access online, which we have accessed online. The other point that is being made, however, is that that full notebook that's online is enormous, as we mentioned last week. One of the reasons that it is enormous is because it has to hit upon everything that every school system in the state has to deal with, and that includes inner-city schools, that includes regional schools, rural school systems, we're a small-town school, we don't need to have every single policy that's in that handbook. What we've decided as a committee is that we're gonna...
That's your opinion.
All right.
That's your, that's your opinion, but, but if the MAS-C has it, that, they're not making a distinguish, distinguish, distinguishing between Abington, East Bridgewater, Brookline, Weston, and Worcester. They're putting that out there, 'cause all public schools need this. I mean, you, go to, go to East Bridgewater, East Bridgewater's on the MAS-C website, they have all those policies. I mean, but I thought we were gonna come here and there was gonna be a, a plan, and, you know, if it's not, this is, you know, if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. We don't have a plan of attack, nothing, I thought it was gonna come to a meeting, we were gonna have some plan of action, we have nothing. You, does the subcommittee, can the subcommittee even tell me how many policies the district has? We don't even know that.
I don't have a number on the top of my head, but you have it as well as we do, because Peter gave us the index page from the handbook.
Right, right, and Peter will even...
And our plan, and our plan of attack, excuse me, I'd like to finish, our plan of attack is to first deal with those new priorities that are given to us by the state, and then to look at the older policies that are in existence to be reviewed, and then to look at anything that the school system needs that we don't have a policy for.
And when is all this gonna get done?
I told you we're meeting monthly.
I mean, there's not, but you, we say this stuff, but if you don't have it in writing, you can't, the index that Peter has, you know, he inherited it, and not, and Peter will be the first one to admit, he knows it needs work, but you've got, if you looked at the field trip policy, it's on there four times. We've got one new policy, and there's three old ones. Are we including those in the count? We shouldn't, and that's, that's the thing, it's like, we, we have a subcommittee that's supposed to report, I asked for this last, last month respectfully, that we're gonna reach out to the MAS-C, get some guidance from them, and we come back and we have nothing. We have, we have, right now, based on MAS-C, and East Bridgewater has adopted the MAS-C, 'cause they're on the website, there's 285 policies that the MAS-C has. Based on what we have in our district, going through, we have 38. That's 13%. Eighty-seven percent, and, and I would like this, please, noted in the minutes, because 80% of the policies the MAS-C says we should have, we don't have, and I will respect Peter when he says, you know, "Some of them, in what you said, we don't need," but there are a lot of them that we need and we don't have, and I don't, what we, this guidance here, that's 43 policies. That doubles what the district has had to date, and our number-one priority for the school committee is policy. It says it right in here, it's like when we start out here. School committee powers and, powers and duties, number one, establishing district policy. We're at 13%. And then, I come into a meeting, and we have, we have nothing. I, I, I'm just, I'm absolutely floored that we, that we would come into a meeting and we don't know how many policies the district has, and that's our number-one priority. I, I don't know, when is this gonna change?
Believe what East Bridgewater did is they adopted everything that...
Absolutely, did, everybody does that, but when you do that, and Kathy and I found this out firsthand, it's like, yeah, everybody does that, but where's the local control? You're just turning it over to MAS-C, just let MAS-C run things, but Kathy and I took the time to go through this, we went through months, 'cause there's a lot of stuff in there that we don't, we didn't want, 'cause they're nitpicking, but we can't do that, but when are we gonna establish policy here?
So I don't, I don't disagree with you that we shouldn't, I don't think we should just adopt everything as they write it at MAS-C, you pay a fee for that, and you just own everything they say, and to your point, then, you know, this is about local control and a committee that's from Abington making decisions for Abington, so obviously, all of those policies have to be worked through, and take their suggestions and consider that each one, the way that you and Kathy did with the governance policies, and then bring them to the full committee.
I look at the policy index that, that the district has right now, if you take three sections of the school committees, governance and operations, fiscal management and negotiations, we have, as of today, we have zero policies, district policies. If anybody wants to challenge me on it, please, I'll give you the data, we have none.
At the same...
We have no fiscal management, we have no negotiations, and we have no governance and operations.
And at the same time, as you know, there are statutes and there are regulations that direct us in terms of the fiscal management and the negotiation process, and we, and we do follow, so I, I'm not disagreeing with you that we don't have, we should have those policies in place, we, we will have them in place, and we should have them in place.
Right.
But just so that if, you know, people are watching on cable, then they think, "Well, what are they doing with their budget, what are they doing with the negotiations?" People in the community should know that we follow the law with regard to both of those processes.
Right, but as a, as a school committee, we need to put things into place, because it's like, how else are we functioning if we don't have policy?
I don't disagree with you, I just didn't want, you know, I didn't want people to have the perception that, you know, it's kinda like the Wild West in terms of the administration, and we don't have anything guiding us, because there's so many regulations and laws and rules around both negotiation and budget, I mean, multiple audits, multiple oversight, and so, I just wanted, I wanted to note that.
And Paul, we do have some direction, we have worked on a plan that we're gonna take a look at things monthly. We're meeting outside of here monthly to take a look at them, to work on them. You and I met probably twice a month to get this document together. Ellen and I are going to meet monthly to work on it. How long it will take, I don't know. When we started the document that we just presented tonight, I had no idea how many times we were going to meet, or how much we were gonna put into it. We aren't saying that we're ignoring it, we're coming back and telling you that we sat down, we take, took a look at what we need to accomplish, we've decided that we're gonna meet monthly, and we've set priorities. You're one member of this committee, and I'm one member of this committee, and Ellen and I volunteered our time to do this, and you're welcome to join the group also, and you're welcome to do any piece of it that you want, but we've set up a schedule that we feel we can work with.
But, but there's nothing in writing in front of me, so I have no idea when anything's gonna get done. Like I said, if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. That's my theme for tonight, if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist, 'cause how else are you supposed to... Because how else are you supposed to function here? We can't just, I mean, this, this was a month later. This is a, I thought we would come in here and we'd have something concrete to say, tangible, to put our hands on, it's, okay, this is the plan. We have nothing. There's nothing here. I don't feel like we're any further than we were a month ago. And it's just, it's just disappointing. I, I, I don't know how else to say it. It's like, policy is our number-one function here. And we, we're at the, the school committee, the district, 13 percent. From what MASC says.
And as I said, Ellen and I volunteered to work on it. We are going to be working on it. We are in the process of working on it. We have had one meeting. If our speed of dealing with it is not up to your standards, you are welcome to come on board.
I can't, I can't, because then it creates a quarrel. You can't have three school committees-
Well, then one of us will be willing to step down. I'm on almost every subcommittee there is. If you'd like to take my, my spot, you're welcome to do so.
Well, I'll leave that up to the chair. I'm not going to remove anybody from anything.
So, at this point, is there any further discussion? Are we looking for a motion? Is there a motion?
Motion, please.
Next, we have an update from the school committee website, subcommittee, which is Paul and Jonathan.
Can I speak for that committee? I don't think there's anything for that.
No, there's nothing, yeah, there's nothing to report on that. Just so people, this committee did not meet, so there is nothing to report, just so for full disclosure.
Not trying to argue with you about that, just, I wanted to acknowledge, though, that work, you provided some work to us, and we made those changes, as many changes as we could on the website to improve. People should see that now, those, those improvements are already there.
Yeah, and I just didn't want to overstep to say we did anything this month, because we did discuss it last month. And, you know, it's, I gotta, I, again, I gotta say that the website's outstanding, and, you know, the work that Peter and the administration did in having Rich on board is, is tremendous.
Surly needed. Thank you.
Thank you to Paul and Jonathan for their time on that committee. Next, we have the review of the proposed MASC resolutions for 2014. And Kathy, as our delegate to MASC, if you want to walk us through that.
Okay, just to explain a little bit how this works. At the delegate assembly, they go through each of the resolutions that you see here in front of you. Any school system, or group of school systems can sponsor something that they would like to see. The delegate assembly discusses it, and vote is taken. And those become the priorities for MASC in things that they are working on to push for changes that would help, excuse me, would help the districts. So, I will be the one who's responsible for voting at the delegate assembly. So, I want to make sure that I know how the school committee wants me to vote, because it's your vote that I'll be putting forward for you. Also, if there are any questions that you want me to bring up at the assembly, I'd be happy to record those and bring that up at the assembly as well. So, we need to go through the resolutions, see how you want me to vote. And if you have any other comments, I can deal with that. The first resolution was submitted by the Framingham School Committee in a hopes of getting greater transparenc, not, greater transparency and accountability for out-of-district placement costs. And we know, all know how expensive those are. I'm not going to read all of the document you have in front of you. What the resolution, what they result, what will be resolved is the section that I'll read to you. Therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees file for and support legislation that will require institutions providing out-of-district placements for education to file end-of-year reports that reflect in detail an inclusiveness, that of corporate annual reports and stock offerings, schedules, and post salaries with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And the rationale behind it is with out-of-district educational placements, taxpayers have no reasonable amount of control and no knowledge of salaries of services being paid for their tax dollars. Reporting for out-of-district schools should be in line with the requirements of any in-district public school.
Well, I agree that there should be greater transparency across everything, so I would be in favor of supporting this resolution.
We, Massachusetts Public Schools spend a lot of money at these private placements, and transparency is a good thing. So, that's certainly, if, I feel a responsibility to make a recommendation on each of these, too, then I'd certainly recommend supporting it.
This, in the first one, whereas a state provides approximately $35,000 on average per student, does that, do you agree with that?
I do, and I should explain it, though. So, and I'm glad you asked, because some placements can, for one child, can cost $250,000, or more, $300,000. And then, when you get into, especially around larger urban systems, they're able to collaborate more students of, of, which we'd probably call with special needs to have a lower, a lower need, a less intense need is probably the best way to say it. And so, those placements are much more affordable. And so, there's a, there's a higher number of more affordable placements, especially as you head toward those urban school systems. You'll see that their cost per pupil of out-of-district placements is lower than, than smaller districts like Abington or most other school systems. But because there's, because the population is centered in these urban places, and there are so many special education placements of less intense need, that drives the average cost down. So, I couldn't tell you that I've checked that number exactly, but that would be why that number is lower than some of those higher placements that you hear about of, you know, $250,000. And that doesn't mean that we have, most of our placements are $250,000 placements. If I were to guess, our average placement cost is probably-
And if you're private or collaborative, I would say probably $50,000.
That's not including transportation.
Not including transportation.
Right.
But it ranges from $18,000 to $200,000.
Well, one placement is over three for residential, 24/7.
So, that's why transparency would be a good thing.
Right.
No, I don't have a problem with it, yeah. To Mike's point, yeah. The more transparency, the better.
Do we need to make a motion on each one as we go along, then? I think, right.
I don't know that you need a, a motion, but it might be nice to take a vote, so that I know that I'm-
Yeah, yeah. So, we'd be-
Asking for-
Asking for-
A motion to support resolution one.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
David?
Aye.
Okay, the second resol, resolution is university quality pre-kindergarten access in Massachusetts. Again, this was sponsored by the Framingham Schools Committee. Therefore be it resolved that MASC file or support legislation that will provide the appropriation for universal pre-K in Massachusetts, and will take the steps necessary to provide access to good, quality, universal pre-K for all children in Massachusetts. The rationale, this resolution will help ensure that our underserved population of three- and four-year-olds will be provided with the supports and services necessary for school readiness and lasting success in the classroom and for future success. Knowing that these strategies are documented in increasing student success, our resolution will level the playing field by helping to ensure equity and beginning the process of closing the achievement gap for this vulnerable cohort of children.
So, basically, you know, the more time our, our children are spending in schools and these, and activities, and the, and the younger that we're able to reach them, the better. So, I'd certainly support this. And I also should mention that we can't do kindergarten, full-time kindergarten in Abington for all students, because we don't have the space. The new building is going to provide that space for Abington down the road. And that, that'll be a whole other discussion in three years about, about that. But we will have that opportunity. I would also, and at that point, we'd also be able to look at pre-kindergarten. And although we haven't actually specked out the numbers for pre-kindergarten, pre-kindergarten is a good thing, and it's something that I, I will want to be specing out with you, but we have to cross the kindergarten bridge first, and then look at the pre-K programs. So, I'd support this, recommend supporting it.
I think I, I also support, and I'd just be curious, and it's something that we couldn't do, but I'd be just curious how Framingham School Committee came up with a 60 percent, you know, people attend preschool or kindergarten, and also where they got that $25,000 student low income. I, I, I mean, I know it's not for us here, but I'd be just curious as to how they came about those numbers.
Like that, the first one that Paul mentioned, I can't specifically verify that.
Does this lead us down the road, though, of, you know, the legisla, legislature, you know, puts these grand ideas out there, and there's going to be appropriations, and then they pull the appropriations back, and now the cities and towns, Abington is left funding this.
That has happened. I can't, I couldn't anticipate that this would, that would or wouldn't happen with this. But that certainly has been something that has happened historically with different things.
Yeah, that's my concern with this, is you, you know, all of a sudden, you, you just set up another unfunded mandate that we have to do this. And, you know, we're, we're, we're struggling to, to keep enough teachers in front of the children we have now, and now we're going to drop down to 34, you know, three- and four-year-olds. And not that I don't want to see that, but it's like, what's, where's our priority? And potentially, what is this going to cost us?
And I couldn't anticipate, but it's, they, I don't know, if you've been hearing more out of MASC about how they're guarding against unfunded mandates, I mean, just how that plays out, a couple of things have just come down where they're suggesting, now what they're doing is they're saying, you know, all schools should have school resource officers pending appropriation. So, you know, that's in the, that's in the gun law that just was passed in Massachusetts, along with two-way dedicated communication with police departments between schools and the local police departments. And that also has, you know, two commas, and in between it says, depending, you know, depending on appropriation. So, they are concerned about that. I have seen and heard people talking more about things being unfunded mandates, but I couldn't anticipate that that wouldn't happen with this. It has happened in the past.
Yeah, because, I mean, we, we're worried about funding now for the programs that we do have, and now we're going to throw this on top. That's where I, not that I don't want to support, you know, families that need a three- and four-year-olds, but we've got kids now in this, in our district that need, you know, support, too.
To that end, we need kindergarten, full-day kindergarten-
Right.
-that is tuition-free.
Right.
Because the full day, just avoiding confusion, the full-day kindergarten we have now requires parents to pay a tuition for the other half of the day to, to make up a full day, so.
So? Any more discussion?
No. I guess I'd like them to make a motion to approve resolution two.
A second? I'll second. Paul?
No, I, I can't support this. I just, I just don't know enough. I don't, I don't like the way this is written. It's not that I don't support children, it's just, we've got kindergarteners now that need appropriations, too.
So, you have a motion to support it, and then discussion, and then all those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before you go on to the next one, Kathy, I just, if people had any comments, this meeting's next week. Right, next weekend?
Yeah.
So, if they had anything-
I'm recording Paul's question. And I will try to bring that up at the, at the, the meeting.
But timing-wise, you'd want it, anything anybody had by next Tuesday, say?
It starts on Wednesday. If they could get it to meet by next Monday, that would be-
By the weekend, mightn't it?
Give me a chance to get things together.
Yeah.
Yes.
And you are going, right?
Yes, I am going.
Sorry, it was just a housekeeping thing, I just-
Yep, no, no, great.
No, I have made, I mean, Paul's problem with it is valid. MASC has been working very hard to, if something is clearly proven to be an unfunded mandate, the state has to pay for it. So, MASC has been pushing for things to be reviewed to get payment for it. And this could very well fall into one of those categories, but I will bring Paul's comments up.
Is that covenant number six, that will be unfunded?
Sort of.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we ready for the next one?
Number three, yeah.
It's charter school reform. This seems to be a perennial big issue. This is actually being submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. Therefore be it resolved that MASC call upon the legislature to enact charter school reform legislation that will include provisions that require, and it says BESE in here, but I'm assuming it's DESI that they're referring to. I think that's a typo. To consider social and economic impact upon the districts from which new or expanding charter schools would recruit students. Require a strong provision to prevent skimming and suspensions from charter schools that require students whom they no longer wish to enroll.
Kathy, it might be, it might be board.
Oh, might be board. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to slowly interrupt you.
No, that's good, because I wasn't sure what that was. In other words, returning students they don't want to the sending districts. The next point was finance reform, so that the charter school explorations from, um, expropriations from local Chapter 70 funding does not severely damage the sending district. Many communities in which charter school is located find themselves really economically disadvantaged because of it. Next point is to require timely reporting on accountability with meaningful data on student attendance, expulsion, suspensions, student at economic risk, low income in comparison with sending districts. Establish benchmarks to measure success. Establish, establishment of a formula for evaluating school districts that use a growth component that is not less than 50 percent of the formula. Require on an annual basis the reporting of best practices and innovation to the sending school districts.
So, in terms of charter schools in Massachusetts, because Massachusetts Public Schools are leading the nation in terms of achievement, the charter school movement in this country has really sort of been stunted in Massachusetts. That doesn't mean that in urban areas it hasn't flourished, and Massachusetts it has. I would certainly recommend supporting this. It's not that I'm necessarily, you know, saying I'm pro or anti-charter school. It's just that the more that you can level a playing field in terms of funding, and impacts, especially in, in those urban school systems, where the feeling is, and I'm not in an urban school system, but the feeling from my urban colleagues is that the charter schools take the best and the brightest and educate them in their charter schools, and then, and then the public schools feel as though they're left with the more disadvantaged students. And so, this speaks to looking at those impacts before those decisions are made. So, you know, you want to think about all kids in a, in a, in a town or in a city. And this hasn't had as much, as much of an impact on Abington. But that's why I would, would recommend supporting it.
I think there was a similar resolution last year, and the funding is always an issue. But one thing I noticed in here, which I thought was really- But one thing I noticed in here, which I thought was really interesting, was to require on an annual basis the reporting of best practices and innovations to the sending school districts. One of the reasons that charter schools are promoted is that they're finding, supposed to be finding more innovative, new, and better ways of teaching kids. Well, if they're actually doing that, then requiring them to report back to the regular school system should be in there, so that any innovations, any ideas that they come up with can be spread to other schools.
As Kathy mentioned, charter schools are supposed to be these laboratories of new things that can be done in education, and then they're supposed to share that with the rest of the Commonwealth, and that hasn't happened yet, so.
There's just one, the second bullet, point on that back page. Finance reform so that charter school expropriations from local Chapter 70 funding does not severely damage the sending district. Does that impact us?
We do have students going to charter school. It does. Do you want?
Yep, so what happens with charter school funding is that it comes off the charter sheet as a charge against your Chapter 70 appropriation. So it isn't taken directly from the school department budget, but it's taken from the revenue that's brought into the town. And it's based on your foundation budget and then an amount above foundation that your town contributes to education. So for, the FY15 estimate for Abington against our, as a charter sheet offset, is $422,797,000, so a little over $400,000.
Then how many students is that?
About 35. We'll know an exact count after the October 1st. Enrollment data comes in via the state, but that's the estimate at the end of last year, as this is also an estimate.
Because the charges are responsible for reporting the number of students, and then we get that report back.
So when it talks about taking money off the Chapter 70 appropriation, it doesn't take it out of the school department budget. It actually takes it out of the revenue that comes into the, into the city or town.
Okay. So, and the average cost to educate a child in Abington is?
$11,000, $12,000.
So this is a little bit more, this is a couple thousand dollars more per child?
Because there's also a capital piece that's added on. I have a funding formula sheet that I can share with you. This was put together by a colleague who is actually at charter school.
Felicia, is our number 35, is that what we usually run?
It fluctuates, really, it fluctuates. In FY14, it was $339,000 in charter school funding. And I don't, I think our number is between 30 and 35, usually. The number of charters that the state is granting has, has been stifled in the last, but there hasn't been new charters. But most of our students go to charter schools and sell short.
Yep. Is it, I hear different things. It's like, so with a charter school, if a student becomes in issue, can they just basically say, "We can't handle you anymore. You need to go back to the public schools"?
When a child leaves a charter school, they come back to the public school?
Right, but, but is it?
They can recommend.
They can rec...
They can recommend that we cannot meet your needs here in the charter school, and your only option left is either to go to another school or go back to the public school.
Okay, all right.
And that does happen, always after October 1st enrollment.
Because like the private schools, I think, are those, they can just say, you know, "We're basically, we're done. We're not putting up with this anymore. Here on, go, but go back."
Right.
And it does, is that what they're trying to adjust, address in some of this language here?
Right, the...
Skimming and suspending.
The skimmy is the...
Okay, all right.
Vote at the top of the page.
Okay.
And that's why, I said, in the urban schools, it's got, it's a, it's a major impact in urban school.
Okay.
And that's why, this is, if you think of, no, that's why if you think about the service of all kids in a town, and the benefit of all kids, those that go to the charter and those that are left behind in those urban places especially, I'd want, I, that's why I recommend supporting.
Okay.
There's also a special education piece that's always come into play with charter schools, because it's a, it's a blind, I mean, how to get in. And so over the course of the years, they've realized that they have to now hire special education teachers and programming and services and how that impacts their budgets as well. But then in some cases, they realize that if a child is accepted and they don't have it built in, then they have to come back to the district and have those conversations. So I think it's a, that's a little twofold in that bullet in particular.
Okay.
So? Any more discussion on that, or?
Okay, I just wanted to call, one other thing, call your attention on the funding summary page. I want, I just, I want to double-check on the district reimbursement portion. This sheet is a couple of years old, and I feel like there was some changes to the reimbursement back to the district in the first year and subsequent years. So I'll check that tomorrow and let you know.
So, we keep looking for the vote, and how we want to proceed on that one?
Someone make a motion?
You can make the motion.
Yep.
Second?
All in favor? Number four?
All right. Number four is on fingerprinting, and it again is submitted by the MASC Resolutions Committee. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC calls upon the legislature to establish such legislation and require that the administering agencies, first, conduct a periodic system review to consider means of streamlining, and reducing costs of operation. This is on the fingerprinting. Ensure that teachers be fingerprinted upon their initial licensure under the supervision of DESI. Establish the requirement that teachers be fingerprinted upon their recertification if they are not already fingerprinted. And establish DESI as a clearinghouse for all background checks for all educators.
So I'd certainly recommend that DESI take more of a responsibility in terms of making this a part of people's licensure. That's already in the law, that it's required as a part of licensure. But this is something that we've been doing, and we've been doing for our employee, with our employees. Our employees carry the burden of paying for this. So I would, I would recommend supporting this. Because, as you had mentioned earlier, unfunded mandates, even sending people for this, the negotiations we have coming up, where people are going to ask that this perhaps be a part of something reimbursed by districts. We don't have the capacity to do some of the work we're currently doing, let alone take on these extra things.
What does this, the last bullet, mean? Establish DESI as a clearinghouse for all background checks for all educators?
I'm anticipating that means that they're going to, they're going to save the information, they're going to have the information, and we're still going to make the decision at the local level. Because I would have a concern that that was taken away at the local level in terms of Cory checks and fingerprinting checks, that we still have the authority, because we're the people hiring the employee.
Because just, that's what concerns me, because the way the policy, the way the policies now are, it's, it's at the local level, it's with the superintendent, and I, that's why I don't take away from local control. It's like, is that what this is all about? That's the way I read it, and that's what concerns me.
Right now, the clearinghouses are those agencies that, that perform these tasks. And then we become a clearinghouse of information, because if somebody goes from one district to this district, I can send a letter to the other district saying, "I've deemed this person employable." And you've got, currently what's been suggested is seven years in which somebody could have that done. This doesn't say explicitly that DESI will be responsible for vetting. And so that's why, to me, clearinghouse means they're, the clearinghouse. They hold the information, they clearly, they provide the information to us, and we're responsible, because this does not explicitly say that DESI is going to make the decision.
I think the intent of this is to streamline the process and perhaps make it less expensive.
I know, but this...
This would go counter to the law if it were, if they were making the decision about employment.
Right.
Because that's, that's a, so again, I, I'm going to be shocked if it's anything other than what they, you know, a clearinghouse means. They hold the information, and then they provide the information to districts. Because this, again, it doesn't explicitly say that they're making the decision as to the appropriateness of someone for employment. Because the law is pretty clear on that.
I'd almost want to make sure that's valid, and I don't know, Kathy, that's something you can ask at that meeting. I'd be, maybe, maybe we can make a motion that says, we can go forward with this based upon...
What that's...
Contingent.
What the interpretation of this is. I don't know if I want to go strictly and say...
Yeah, that's what concerns me. I'm with you on that, yeah.
So we're looking at the last bullet here, and want to know what they mean by "a clearinghouse for all background checks."
Right.
That the decisions are still made on the local level, that they would basically be just holding information and provide it to the districts. We would support that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So then our vote would be based on the response to that, would be how you'd proceed?
Right, in this case, what you'd have to be doing is giving me the responsibility to do your homework.
Yeah, and I think we did that with one last year.
We did, yeah, there was one, it...
And I have no problem with that, so.
Some of them become very controversial, and there's a lot of discussion that we didn't anticipate. I mean, there was one last year that took a lot of discussion, and I think it was a charter school one. And it was one thing that we just voted for without discussion. And, but, you know, you look at the perspectives of other people, so.
So do we need to make a...
So someone would make a motion that Kathy would support this on behalf of the Abingdon School Committee contingent upon the school district...
Clarification of the last bullet.
...maintains control over access of the information, and then the final determination as to whether or not the person's employed, based on that information.
All right, I'll make that motion.
All right.
Second?
All in favor?
All right. Resolution five, reinstat, reinstitution of earmarking. Again, submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC supports the reinstatement of federal earmarks for school district, regional school districts, and municipalities through the federal appropriations process.
So I would recommend supporting this because, although I'm not in favor of earmarking funds at the federal level, that's like the third rail in this political environment, I am in favor of monies that are intended for schools to get to schools. Because what happens is the federal government releases these monies, and then it gets chopped up into different, by DESI, it gets chopped up at the municipal level, and then finally it gets to the schools. What this does is this funnels the money directly, more directly to schools from the federal government.
So we're only, we're supporting earmarks just for the schools?
That would be exactly, absolutely. Unashamedly guilty.
Any more discussion?
No.
So we'd be looking for a motion, vote on this?
I'll make that motion.
Up second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Number six?
All right. Number six, unfunded mandates and new testing. This I anticipate being a highly discussed matter. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC calls on the State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Legislature to refrain from adding new mandates, including new tests and other initiatives, and to revisit the mandates already imposed on districts with a view to reducing interference with classroom instruction, thus allowing educators to do their job. The rationale, the cost of implementing a new PARK system and revise, a revision of the curriculum to meet common core standards will be expensive and represent an unfunded mandate. Further, many believe the state-imposed regulations, advisories, standards, and directives represent the imposition of unfunded mandates upon cities, towns, and regional school districts.
So I would certainly recommend supporting this. The more that, the more that they can, as these things roll down, the more that they can fund with these unintended consequences that we're seeing. I mean, you know, in terms of this budget presentation for this coming year, we have a subcommittee that at the end of this meeting, Felicia and I are going to ask if we can start putting meeting dates together for the Budget and Finance Subcommittee meeting. Meetings that we're going to have technology over the next three years is something we're still going to need until we open this new building, so that we can administer the PARK test. And right now, there's, that's certainly not funded adequately through Chapter 70. There's been no budget for that, for us to do that in previous years. And so the new school will certainly take care of that problem. We've got three years before we open the doors on that new school, with that technology. And we still have three years with the kids that need to take this test and need an education using technology.
But we haven't adopted PARK yet.
Yeah, that's true. That could, that's true. There's a lot of people that feel that that's still a jump ball in Massachusetts. Certainly has been in other states. We're down to 16 states?
One thing I failed to tell you was that this was submitted by Arlington, Chelmsford, Lincoln Sudbury, Mendenupton, Northbridge, Holbrook, Woburn, and the Worcester School Systems.
Can, I asked, you know, the educators at the table here, just when they say, "Due to this rising tide of state mandates requiring educators to respond first to bureaucratic requirements rather than classroom instruction", how do you, how does anybody respond to that? I mean...
I don't know if you're looking for my own personal opinion?
Yeah, yeah, just...
My own personal opinion is I think that standardized testing raises our standards and is a good thing, but there are problems with it. One of the problems is, is its creativity. Project-based learning has been sacrificed, and it, and it takes away from some of those things that make a school day exciting. And, and it creates a more rigid structure that people have to live in, a bureaucratic structure. That's my own, that's my own personal opinion. I don't know if Felicia...
That was a huge cost factor that I think is not always out there, like openly discussed, that the amount of money that is spent on the testing, delivering the testing, scoring the testing. You know, it would be nice to have that money to have staff in front of children. So I think that's a big piece of it. But I do believe that you do need some type of assessment. So, you know, what assessment that is. But I think that as you see, you know, the certain towns and cities that are feeling a huge impact, and many of them are either wealthy communities or cities that receive huge grants. So this is going to have a significant impact in Abington if we do change from MCAS to PARK, just looking financially. Then we have to look at the technology piece, and then we also have to look at...
And time, and the amount of time of testing, the amount of time that's taken out of classroom instruction, and the cost, the cost of that and the cost to kids.
Something we've talked about at the administrative level is how, you know, we could, you could spend a couple hundred bucks on Chromebooks, and then you'd have a test delivery system. But we'd be doing a disservice to kids, because what we need is, we need to improve... But we'd be doing a disservice to kids because what we need is we need to improve technology that they touch every single day in the, in teaching and learning and then use those computers to administer the test. We don't want to throw a Band-Aid at it for a couple hundred dollars a Chromebook so that we could administer a test. Seems like it'd be doing a disservice to kids. We want to, we want to have technology used in the daily practices that, of our students in, in teaching, in, in learning and making projects and, and education, so.
So, when they say bureaucratic requirements rather than classroom instruction, is, are we seeing a, a major trend or a significant trend as far as just you trying to do your, you know, in the classroom trying to do your job educating children versus all this paperwork? And I, I just, remember my father retired 26 years ago and he said one of the things that would frustrate him, he loved the job, but it was more about the paperwork than it was about the kids. And is that what we're, what we're getting at?
Six years later, it has intensified.
And it's like it's gotten worse, right?
You're not teaching as much as you would, I mean, you're teaching, but the amount of data collection, the amount of paperwork, the amount of alignment with your supervision and evaluation following the regulations, the types of data collection in order to adhere to and look at common assessments, 26 years ago was probably really good. Now at 26, and they thought it was tough then.
Right.
26 years later, you know, I really have strong opinions that I won't share, but I feel like my job is nothing but bureaucratic stuff half the time. And I didn't go into central office for that, but, you know, it's, it's paperwork, paperwork, document, document. And that's just for the DESI. We also have school committee, we have other community, you know, pieces we also have to answer to, so it's a lot.
I agree. I, I'm in my third year of retirement. I miss working with kids, but I sure don't miss all the paperwork. There was a lot of it. And research has shown that kids learn better and remember more and retain more when they can do that project-based learning. And a lot of that gets squeezed out with all the prep work for testing. But we need to get back to resolution six.
So, if there's no further discussion, you'd be looking for a motion?
I'll make that motion to have Kathy voting in favor of, of Resolution six.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Number seven, assessment system in Massachusetts. This again was submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. Therefore be it resolved that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education conduct further examination of options for a state evaluation and accountability system and to substantially involve educators and school committee members in the process of choosing an assessment instrument and to refrain, refrain from committing to any instrument before this process is complete.
This speaks to the PARK discussion, speaks to MCAS, speaks to those changes that we're seeing and I think asks for a broader involvement in those decisions. So, I would support that. I think the more robust you can have a process, the better the outcome is.
I think more, as you get more of local level involvement, I think you get a better solution to what we need to have done.
Any other discussion? Looking for a motion as to how we're going to vote on that?
I'll make a motion to support Resolution seven.
Second.
All in favor?
At the session, we'll also be looking at amendments to the MASC bylaws and the two of them are written here. So, I'd need to know how you want me to vote as far as that's concerned as well. It, I don't know if you want me to read the two of them to you, whether you want to read it or?
That, that first one, I just, when they say require immediate action, I mean, when does the MASC need immediate action? I mean, it just seems like going to executive, to the executive committee, it's like, it's a slippery slope when all of a sudden you're giving authority to this executive committee because we call it, you know, what's, how do you define immediate action? I just find it hard to believe that anything that they do is immediate.
Anything that you, I don't have a recommendation on these for you, I'm sorry, but, you know, MASC is a good organization. I found them to be helpful in terms of helping systems and school committees, but how it is that the internal workings of the bylaws work for U.S. committee members as members is really up to you.
That's like when the House and the Senate aren't in session, you have somebody.
Right.
Controlling everything as opposed to a.
Right.
Broader group.
Yeah. I, I'm more inclined to leave it the way it is and let the board address it because I don't know how many times they need, require immediate action and for what? I, I just wonder what's, you know, they have rationales behind these resolutions? They don't have rationale behind these proposals to amend the bylaws?
Included the entire bylaw language in the packet for your reference, but obviously it doesn't answer that question.
Yeah.
Any other discussion or comments?
People could vote them separately or together if you want.
Do you want to do it separate or?
I mean, the other one is.
It's a timing thing.
It's a timing thing that's rather cut and dry. I mean, obviously, I, not being on the Board of Directors or on the executive committee, I don't know what issues that they deal with on a daily basis. I know in any, any organization, it's nice to have some kind of steps that can be taken if an emergency comes up. What emergency might come up, I don't know. So, I mean, I would want to have identified what immediate action might mean, what they might be referring to. So, I mean, I don't mind holding off on that until that question is answered.
Yeah, that, I'm with you on that. That's my concern.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a good approach to let Kathy see what, what's going on.
Right.
So, that's on the first proposal?
On the first one.
Yep.
The second one is basically a time thing. Division officers shall take office on July 1st following election. And to substitute, division officers shall take office on January 1st following election. The meeting shall be held at or in advance of the annual meeting of the association or if a quorum cannot be reached, then as soon as is practical. So, basically, it's just a change in date as to when the officers will take, take office.
I guess I have no, no problem with that.
I don't have a problem with that.
I have no problem with that either.
Okay.
We make a motion that, how we're going to vote?
To vote in favor of, yeah.
Okay.
Second bylaw.
I'm second bylaw, yes.
So, Mike, and the second was?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. So, do we have to make a motion on the first one or what are we doing on?
I didn't know.
We're not doing any?
Was there a vote?
I think we didn't.
No, I think we need.
I think we made a motion.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't do a.
We didn't do a motion.
No, we didn't do a first one.
So, we need to make a motion that.
Well, you would vote, you always make the motion in the favor and then you'd vote no.
Vote no, okay.
But is that what we were going to do or I thought we were going to?
I thought we were going to wait to find out what immediate action referred to and then make a decision, but you guys can't make the decision. You have to leave it up to me.
Yeah, we're going to leave it up to.
And you'd give Kathy the authority.
The authority?
I think it would be a resolution.
Like what we did on number four.
Right.
So, you'd need to make a motion that based on what Kathy.
Finds out.
Finds out.
Yeah, determines what, yeah, immediate action is.
I guess I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, that's it on the MASC?
Thank you again, Kathy.
Okay. All your work. So, moving on, we have, under unfinished business, the discussion on the Abbott and Public Schools fingerprinting policy.
So, those policies were brought back to the subcommittee for discussion and then with suggested edits. And then those, the subcommittee, I don't speak for the subcommittee, decided to send them off to council to be reviewed again with the suggested edits and they're not back yet.
Do we have an, do we have an anticipated date when they would get back from, from council?
I was actually thinking we were going to have them for this meeting. I was hopeful to have them last week. They're not. They were just sent, when was our subcommittee meeting?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. So, they were sent the evening of the 17th, so, but they, there are, there's a lot to.
It's a fair amount of edits.
To go through.
Can we push them to have it ready for the next school committee meeting or?
I can call.
Just only because as they spend more and more time, they spend more and more dollars and.
Now, when they come back from Joe, does the subcommittee have to reconvene or are they going to, no, because he?
We are scheduled for another meeting before the next school committee meeting, so we can review them when they come back.
All right. And it just, because I, you know, Mike got a good point last meeting, three or four days isn't enough time and there's a lot. I actually think those two policies are harder to get through than the 43 policies we have in the governance and operations.
Well, they're extremely important policies to have completed and voted.
Right. And, but that's why I think he, it's going to take more time to get through those two than it will the governance.
And just so people are aware, with Chapter 222, that's the discipline law, we're still administering, you know, good management and discipline of the school buildings in Abington. We're following the law. Doesn't mean that, that everything's come to a grinding halt. And then with fingerprinting, we have fingerprinted all of the new employees to the district back to September of, we started July 1st, sorry. We started giving people letters in September, so then July 1st they'd have to get it done. We anticipated they'd have to get done. So, we've been doing that and the state is now rolling out the second phase where they'll be fingerprinting current employees. So, we're still implementing the law. So, just people don't think that that's not taking place in Abington in the interim.
And then there's a quarry piece to that too.
And the quarry, and the quarry is also taking place, but that's been a longstanding regulation in Massachusetts that we've been following.
But that, that policy is part of the fingerprinting.
Yes.
So, there's really three policies that.
So, I have, I couldn't, yeah, we have nothing for tonight other than what has been discussed in the last couple minutes.
Now, there were those, and I didn't bring it up earlier, but have we given any other consideration to possibly adding a second meeting to deal with policy issues? I know there's no motion for it, but it was just, you know, because we, we've got a lot of stuff that we have out there and it, I don't know how we're going to get through it.
So, are you requesting that we?
At some point, I'd like, yeah, I'd like to put that to a vote where, because I don't understand how we're going to get through all this stuff. I mean, you know, it's 8:30 now and, you know, these policies going to take, they take time to get through. And I just want to be respectful of everybody's time, especially, you know, where, I don't think it's productive to be discussing these things at 10 or 11 o'clock at night. I'd rather come back another night when everybody's fresh and I'm not as cranky.
Sam's just going to college, but he still has homework to do.
Right.
So, we'd be looking for.
At the next, at the next.
Have it on the next agenda for the next meeting, Mr. Agadis request.
I suppose going forward, it depends upon also how efficient we are.
Right. Right, exactly.
Okay. It'll be on the next agenda.
Okay, so, moving on, we have.
Report to Superintendent Schools?
Yep.
I've accepted the resignation of Kathleen Blumstein as a science teacher in the Abbott and Public Schools for the purpose of retirement. Accepted the resignation of Carrie Di Lorenzo as a 15-hour-a-week paraprofessional. Accepted the resignation of Catherine Gamache as a special needs teacher in the Abbott and Public Schools for the purpose of retirement. Accepted the resignation of D'Angelo Gonzalez as a computer network support technician. Accepted resignation of Maria Gentile as a paraprofessional for the purposes of retirement. Accepted the resignation of Teresa Taylor as a school nurse for the purposes of retirement. Accepted the resignation of Mary Williams as a special needs teacher for the purposes of retirement. I've approved the appointment of Michael Ameralt as a substitute three-fifths wellness teacher. I have approved the appointment of Kelly Capulo as a 15-hour paraprofessional within the Abbott and Public Schools. Approved the appointment of Kim Cutter as a paraprofessional within the Abbott and Public Schools. Approved the appointment of Cynthia Porter as a paraprofessional within the Abbott and Public Schools. Approved the appointment of Karen Ritter as a 15-hour-a-week custodian within the school department. And approved the appointment of Jason Scott as the intermural advisor at Abington High School. Approved the appointment of Lauren Peruzzi as the intermural advisor at Frelleau Middle School. Approved the following winter coaches for ice hockey, Brian Smith. Assistant ice hockey, Bill Hingston. Girls head basketball, Steve Moore. Girls assistant basketball, Jennifer Clifford. Boys freshman basketball, Joe Sebastian. Winter cheerleading, Kim Hicks.
Do we have a, like a delta head count with all this movement around?
So, it's always, it's always important to answer, to address that. So, let me give you an example. We had a, a delivery person for the food service program and, and moving mail around the district as a part-time person. So, they left and then a custodian filled that position. So, when that one person left, you'll, you'll get a, a notice that that one person moves into that position. Well, the one person who moved into that position was a custodian, so then you get another notice that we had to hire a custodian for that. So, there are dominos here. So, to answer the question in terms of total additions to the system, other than what you already know about or has been budgeted for, there is the addition of a paraprofessional to meet the needs of a child who's moved in from another district. And we anticipate in the coming month, we'll have to add another paraprofessional for a similar type of situation. So, all told though, from all of these, from the beginning of the school year till this point, that's, that's the increase. The kindergarten teacher that we had to add, you already knew about, we talked about, based on the numbers that we were seeing in kindergarten and inclusive in that as a paraprofessional, we had to add to that room for that kindergarten program. So, but there are dominos here. If somebody goes out on medical leave, it's another example in here, somebody's out on a medical leave. So, we moved somebody in the district to cover for them, so they have an additional appointment and then we had to move someone from outside in to cover for the person who moved in to the medical leave position, if that makes sense.
When we have this report, can we get a, a head count, just summary form to say by school, you know, full-time, part-time, paras, just so, you know, it goes from month to month where the head count is? Just so, you know, because you see a lot of movement here and I don't know what it trans, translates into. So, when we have movement like this, if we could just get a, a head count, you know, from the first day of school through whatever meeting we're in, in a month, because we must track that head count month to month, right?
We don't track it month to month, but I can tell you, like the summary I gave you, we're up one person in terms of full-time equivalency as a para. As a result of all of this, we're up that one person. But we, we could put that, we could put that together.
But I think that, you know, the other, for example, D.O. Ganzop, who's the technology network support technician, his resignations on this listed here, so we wouldn't want it decreased by a head count because next month, because he's still here now.
Oh, yeah.
But next month, we're going to be most likely having a new person in that spot. So, although the resignations in this month, the additions in the following.
Oh, absolutely. And, and more than, hopefully if everything goes well, there'd be a seamless. And more than, hopefully, if everything goes well, there'd be a seamless transition. There wouldn't, there wouldn't be any delta that wouldn't change. Someone left and someone came in.
Right, but I guess we can just do a straight head count. I mean, it's, but it wouldn't be necessarily, it wouldn't represent what's on, what's in the personnel matters, I guess is what I'm saying. Because if it was a resignation, we would be down one because there's a resignation, and it'd be-
Right, but head count doesn't change until someone actually officially leaves. They terminate. So, I wouldn't, like, that one, any of these, they wouldn't come off. So, but it's just an idea of, how many employees does a district have at any given time? It's more of that.
Yep. And then, and just so that you know, in reporting out, we're, like I said, we're plus one for paraprofessional beyond what was anticipated, and what could, and it couldn't be reasonably anticipated in terms of what the child and what the services are required, and I anticipate we'll, we'll add another one for next month.
But are we plus two on the para? Because we had the kindergarten teacher, plus the para, and then this additional para.
Correct.
Okay. Again, I, I just wanted to just confirm, so we've got a few of these retirements that are effective in twenty sixteen, twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the paras, Cynthia Porter and Kim Cutter, now, how many hours are they working?
So-
Six a day.
Yeah, full-time para works six a day.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's designated how many hours?
Okay. And they're full-time paras? So, that'd be thirty hours a week?
Yes.
Okay. And then on, what's the intramural, intramural advisor do?
So, they'll be opening up the gym, at different points of the year, they do different activities, whether it's basketball, or floor hockey, or the weightlifting room. They try to offer a different, Amy Samson.
Yeah. I believe last week, Mrs. Scott had cornhole and ten-
Ping pong.
Yeah, ping pong in the gym after school on Thursday.
Okay.
I'm not sure how many people went or anything, but he was just the advisor there.
So, the goal throughout the year is to offer different things?
Yeah.
So that there's always, at some point in the year, something that somebody might like. So, people can go to all of them. We want people to participate in it, but we try to mix it up.
And how often is it offered?
It's twice a week, I think.
Yeah. He just started two weeks ago, I believe.
Okay.
Once it gets off the ground, you shoot for twice a week. Now, if there's a short week or a professional, you know-
Probably just be once a week.
Yeah, yeah, then it's limited.
And sometimes when it's football and soccer are winding down, and it's before basketball's kicking in, you might have more kids step up at that little-
I'm sure once soccer ends-
Right.
There'll be more kids there.
Okay. So, I just want to, on the middle school, for all, Lauren Peruzzi was appointed an intramural advisor. Last month, she was appointed drama, running, and zumba.
Correct.
So, I'm just, and this isn't a-
Yep.
Question, Lauren, it's like, do we spread the wealth around? How does this work? How do the, how do the appointments happen?
Good, good question. So, for those, she's, she's the one that's applied.
Okay.
So, it wasn't like there was somebody else that wanted the job, because we would want to spread it around as much as possible, leaning toward the person that is the most enthusiastic, obviously, and most importantly, most qualified to run that program. So, those other things, though, and I'm anticipating what might be another question, are shorter programs, whereas the intramural runs for the entire year.
Okay.
So, those, the Frollo has, in the Frollo contract, in terms of positions, they have advisors that are shorter advisory periods, so those are more compressed offerings. Not as many, they won't meet as many times as an intramural program, because already you've, you've run out of days of the week.
Right. Like, the running, you're not gonna-
Pretty close.
Right, the running, you're not gonna be doing in the winter.
No. No, and also, you know, as you mentioned, it's like, you know, zumba, running-
And drama.
And drama. In intramurals, that would be, you know, every day.
Right.
So, that's not what's occurring with those offerings.
So, by going up a head count of plus one, did our budget go up respectively with the cost of what a para is full-time?
Salary account goes up that amount, yeah.
Okay. And one last question. The girls basketball coaches and the freshman basketball coach and cheerleading coach, I know are, have been there for a while. I'm not aware of the hockey coaches, are they new or have they been?
They've been there.
Okay.
Probably four years, five years.
Okay.
I don't follow hockey.
Just curious, is Joe Sebastian in there for a while? Just joking. He's probably the most tenured guy there, isn't he, out of the athletic department? It's like twenty-something years. Yeah. Joe's a good guy. I mean, he's, he does a good job with the kids.
Other questions on that? No section?
No.
Next, we have under other matters, superintendent schools, summary of goals and evaluation.
Can you walk through it?
Yes.
Okay. So, last year, what I did was I took this terrible template that you have in your packet, because it's what everybody used in Massachusetts in the system, and next year, I'm gonna not use this template. But it was important as we started, for me, it was important as we started the new teacher evaluation tool system in Abington, that a hundred percent, everybody, including me, used this new evaluation tool, because if we're going to implement it with fidelity and then make adjustments as we go, that's the best way to understand how it works. So, what I gave you was SMART goals, exactly the way educators were submitting SMART goals, both one for student achievement, and then student learning, and then one for professional practice. So, those are here on the second page. Then what I did below that is just a factual summary, up or down, of the numbers of my attainment of those goals, based on, based on the numbers that have been provided through our testing data, and the numbers that have been provided through the evaluation data we've collected. So, the first goal was, across all content areas and grade levels, student achievement and proficiency will be reflected in locally selected, developed district measures and show growth as measured by the student, median student growth percentile, MSGP of fifty-one percent or better, as measured by the MCAS test for students in the aggregate, which is one percent above the state median. The reason that was selected was because that means that Abington students will grow in their achievement faster and better than the average system in Massachusetts. That was the target. So, in, in those areas, both math and English, those tested areas. So, below in the summary, you'll see, across all content areas and grade levels, student achievement and proficiency reflected in locally selected, developed, district-determined measures. That took place. I included in the packet all of the district-determined measures that were submitted to the state of Massachusetts, and I have a memo from the state that I could show you if you want to see it, that indicates that we've submitted a district-determined measure for each area of instruction in Abington. So, what that basically does, it establishes at the classroom level a baseline for learning, so that if, if a student in grade three needs to increase their writing as it pertains to math, a rubric was developed measuring what teachers were expecting in terms of increased writing around solving a math problem, and we'll have a baseline for that, and all of that information was submitted to the state for every single subject area in, in Abington. In terms of the student achievement on MCAS, growth was measured in the, in the, in the median student growth percentile, it was actually fifty-one percent in English language arts in the aggregate, that's for all students in the Avenue Public Schools. So, in ELA, in Abington, our students performed at the fifty-one percent, fifty-one percent level. In math, our students performed in the bullet below at forty-seven percent, which is four percent lower than the target, or three percent lower than the average system in Massachusetts out of a hundred points. And so, this is just the facts, or the actual numbers, as I laid out my goal, summarizing those, that information. And then, my second goal was the professional practice goal during the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year, through collaborative, ongoing meetings and focused professional development offered by the district, and through collaborative, Teachers Twenty-One, the Avenue Public School Administrative Team, Labor Management Joint Evaluation Team, and the Curriculum Planning and Professional Development Councils are all different groups that, that, that we use in the school system. A hundred percent of the faculty administration will be evaluated using the new teacher evaluation system. So, that has taken place in Abington. So, the new evaluation tool was used. In the following pages, I gave you an action plan. I can drill down to whatever level you would like on, on these components of the action plan. Just, I'll highlight a couple. For example, review the Avenue School Department's strategic plans, goals, and objectives with building principles, and then it's align those for our buildings. Review and update and gain approval, the Avenue School Department's strategic plan and individual action plans with the school committee. So, all of those things were completed last year, we did those things. So, those things in those documents are what drive the work in the schools, and that's how we keep everything aligned. If you look on the next page, the status on some of these items is incomplete and ongoing. For example, alignment of the curriculum to the common core. We are aligned to the common core. However, I noted here, we don't have all of the resources that we need. We're in desperate need of math textbooks, and that'll be in our budget proposal. And so, that's why, that's why I indicated we're complete in that area, but it's important to note that we need resources. You know, and if you go down, provide optimal class sizes, well, that's, that's incomplete. We, I haven't accomplished that. Now, some of that is obviously budget-dependent, and there's no one here that doesn't want to provide optimal class sizes for our kids in Abington. And so, those, I just felt a responsibility to comment on each of those, and, you know, add some questions about what the status was of those, of each of these things. So, I went on. Some of these things are going to be completed and ongoing. For example, commit time and resources for meaningful collaboration and high-quality professional development. Well, we did that, and yet, we need to continue to do that. So, I put, so I put complete with ongoing there. And I don't, and I don't want to read the entire document to you. So, I certainly don't want to answer any questions that people have about the summary I've provided, but then also, you know, go back to that, but in the next steps, well, maybe I should just answer questions and then talk about the next steps.
I think we should mention that timing-
Yeah.
-of this is based on the release of our MCAS results.
And the analysis of the results. The reason I couldn't bring this to you sooner is because we get the, we get preliminary results, and those change. And it's probably middle to September, end of September, before they're, they're done, the potential for them to, for those preliminary results to change. And so, then, over the last couple of weeks, the analysis and the deep analysis has begun, and we're still doing that deep analysis. And so, you know, in the next agenda, I'm gonna talk about goals for next year, even though I've proposed some things, even what I've proposed, I think, and I want to make people aware, are subject to change depending on that deep analysis, because as we go through this, we're talking about multiple grades for thousands of students across the system in, in different testing areas. So, I want to be careful and deliberate about this, because this is gonna help drive some of the budget recommendations that are gonna be made, so that we can improve student achievement in Abington.
And also, just to reiterate, that your goals filter on down to the principals at the different schools, and then-
Right. So, in terms of the professional practice goal, in, in the coming year, you know, I'm gonna advocate for my professional practice goal to be about effectively using data in classrooms to improve instruction. It's the next layer of the teacher evaluation system. It's the next thing that we need to, to roll out. And so, if I make that my goal, then what happens is I go and I'm able to evaluate the principals to make sure that the principals are doing that in their buildings, and then we've got an online system where I can check and actually pull data. And that's how I know that everybody's been evaluated that way, because they pull that data off of that online tool, so I can tell you that every single person in Abington has been evaluated, and I can see those evaluations, and I, and I work with the principals on those. Also, though, you know, the, the rubric for superintendents in Massachusetts has been provided to you in the next agenda item, at the end of last year, and I think this is healthy, there are forty-two different elements in that, in that rubric. So, as we get through this, this public discussion, which is what it needs to be, open and public about my evaluation, and committee members evaluate me, it all is done openly and publicly, and I'm inviting you to please take pieces of that rubric as you feel you need in, in the evaluation of my performance. And I'm willing to meet with people, provide more information about any one of these areas or anything people want to look at and touch, but there isn't anything that I can think of, and maybe there is something, that would be expected of me that isn't somewhere in that rubric. You can, you can find a way to connect it one way or another, whether it's community outreach, or provide, you know, safe, safe schools, or, you know, the work on new construction of a building, or whatever it is that you want to key in on.
So, as Peter said, there's forty-two elements there.
Yep.
So, basically, what, what we need to do is, any kind of comments discussion, all has to be done in the open. And comments will get filtered back, and then I provide some type of summary, which then we present again, comments. I know Peter's available for any questions, or anything anybody wants to talk to him about.
That way, if you, well, first of all, I'll answer questions people have about the summary, but then, or, or any, anything else people want to talk about with addressing the thirteen, fourteen school year. But then, if, if people would then, after you've asked your questions, or you want to meet with me, or you want to get your hands on more data, more information, whatever people wish, those are provided to the chair in an email. That can be done without a violation of the open meeting law, because it is not a deliberation. You're providing information one way, and then if you would, wouldn't mind copying me on those, because as the employee, I should know what people are thinking about my work and performance, then the chair creates a summary of those, and, and that summary is what becomes my evaluation. After the committee votes to approve that summary, that summary is put in my personnel file.
Okay, now, can I hear what the school committee's process is? That, that's, you're, you're the superintendent, and you're telling us how we're gonna evaluate you. What does the school committee have to say? I mean, with all due respect, Peter, I mean, you just told the school committee how we're gonna evaluate you. Where's the school committee to say, this is how we're gonna evaluate you?
I'm interested in that.
But, but I didn't, I just, so, we're not expected to have questions, I mean, this was provided to me on Friday, so you go through it. I mean, and I will know, I would like this corrected for the record, because it's a summary of the superintendent's goals and evaluation. I don't want there to be misconstrued, this is a self-evaluation. This isn't our evaluation, this is a self-evaluation. But, but, you know, if I step back and I just, if someone didn't know any better, it's like, you're telling us how we're gonna do the, but what does the school committee have to say about how we're gonna evaluate you?
So, this-
No, Peter, stop. Please, stop. I'm asking you. I'm asking the school, I'm asking the school committee, but the superintendent's telling me how we're gonna evaluate him.
I would like to request to clarify what the summary is, and then I'll sit back and let the committee-
I didn't ask about the summary. I asked about the process. I asked about the process the school committee is going to go through to evaluate the superintendent.
Respectfully, I'd like to request to address the summary comment that was made.
Thank you.
This is a factual summary of my goals, and to Paul's point, I agree that the word evaluation is misleading. And that word evaluation shouldn't be there. But this is a factual summary of the goals I submitted.
I never question...
So I agree, I'm agreeing with you.
I never question the authenticity of this.
No, no.
It's just the way it gets presented. It's, this isn't, I don't want somebody to get the, what this is, is a product produced by the school committee. It's not.
This is, I never intended this to be my evaluation. This is a factual summary of the goals I presented, is what I, is what this is.
Right. But if someone didn't know any better, and they picked this up, you could take, make the, well, who's the employee? Oh, okay. It's like name, title, Abington School Committee. No, the school committee must have prepared this. We didn't do that.
Can I have, I'll recognize Kathy Bailey.
Okay. The form you have here is one that I think was produced when the new evaluation system was developed from the state. Last year, with Peter's evaluation, we took this document that he created, and we actually evaluated on the computerized program that all the other educators were evaluated with. And I think it was a good process for us, because I wanted to see what the administrators were using. However, I don't know that it was the best way for us to do it. And I have found in, I think it would be more useful for you as well as for us. If we were to take a look at your comments and your self-evaluation, and look at the state's rubrics, and made our own evaluation of you, and submitted it to the chair, and the chair could summarize it, we would still have to vote at open meeting as to what your evaluation was. The rubrics are very easy to follow, to a certain extent. However, the rubric is set up as, according to all of the indicators. So in order to evaluate Peter's goals, we're going to have to take a look at which indicators are reflected in those goals, and then use the descriptors in the rubric in order to evaluate it. Not that we can't just use our own comments, but I think it's a... If we're expecting our administrators to evaluate our teachers according to this system, I think we need to use the system to evaluate Peter. And I think the descriptors make it a lot easier to determine what level that evaluation should take. But I think I would find it less restricting to actually write my own evaluation, submit it to Ellen to be put with everyone else's, than to be restricted to the computer program that's being used for the other teachers in the system.
I mean, I like the idea of using the rubric to evaluate Peter, and also being able to write my own comments and then submit them to the chair as well, after maybe having some discussions with Peter as well, because I need to make sure I understand everything that's in this rubric that needs to be evaluated.
I'm requesting someone provide me with instructions on how I'm supposed to do this. I don't, I'm not following. Unless it's in writing, it doesn't exist. I'm not going to do this blindly based on, I mean, because, you know, I said this last year, and I think these goals, and this is no disrespect to Peter, because this is what the state says, but I think these goals are an absolute joke. It's an embarrassment. You can't even understand what these goals are, the professional one, the SMART goal, the student learning. I mean, again, I think I said it last year, send this to a junior or senior English class, and they'll send it back and say, try it again, because this doesn't make any sense to me. And I don't know why we can't simplify it. And I think that's what Kathy, the impression I get from Kathy is, she's trying to simplify this. You know, so until someone can tell me, these are the steps that I have to go through, whether I'm using a system, whether I'm, you know, like Mike said, you know, coming up with my own comments, I want someone to lay it out for me, tell me, this is what is expected of me, because I can't, I can't follow this. This is just, this is, and again, and Peter, I'm not saying this about you, I'm saying about the way this system is designed to work. I can't follow this. I mean, think about a goal. It's like, isn't the goal, you're just doing your job? And if you ask me, you're doing your job? Peter, you're doing your job. I think you're doing a very good job. I think you're hitting on all the stuff. But this stuff is just, this is a joke, and it kind of restricts you. You can't do that, because it's like we're stuck into the system, and that's where it's like, timeout. Let's take local control. Let's do it our way. Let's use some common sense here. Let's do it the way we want to do it. You know, you, we could send in a DESI, whatever they want, but it's like, I want to give you a real review, where we can give you information back that will help you develop, and if there's any issues, then we can say, hey, Peter, did a great job here. Maybe you fell a little short here. But people can understand it. This you can't understand. And, you know, and again, this is the world you live in. And I'm just asking for a timeout to say, can we think about doing this another way? Because either that or someone lay out for me what's expected of me, because I don't know.
So if I could, I, could I comment and just say, you know, if people don't like the color of my tie, I'd like to know. Because as an employee, I need to know that if I'm going to improve the color of my tie. And so I'm open to the feedback. I want the feedback so that I can do the best job possible. This summary was never, ever, ever intended to be me writing my own evaluation. I just want to be very clear about this. This summary was intended to be a factual summary of what I submitted to you about my goals. I just want to say that. And we talked about last year, using that rubric so that you could touch on anything you wanted. Because my belief is, you know, this is the school committee that I work with, and whatever process we use, I just need clear, clear communication around my evaluation.
Right. And if I take this, it's like, I'd rather see, you know, we, whatever is here, it just, Peter, tell me the story about your year. How do you think you did? We can just lay it out in paragraphs, or this doesn't, I don't know what this is. And I know this is what, you know, you have to, this is the world you have to work in, but it's like, I don't know if the school committee needs to work in that same world. Like, we want you to be able to present yourself in as plausible as you think you can when you do your self-evaluation. This, to me, doesn't do that for you, because it's like, what is this? It's like, incomplete, ongoing, incomplete, like, I don't know what this stuff is, and it...
The problem is...
It's like, tell me, someone tell me a story.
The problem is, and I understand what you're, and I appreciate what you're trying to do, but the problem is, is that, you know, as we as a district, identify and embed, for example, I'm just picking one randomly, Strategic Directive 1.1, provide rigorous and relevant curriculum and instruction in an optimal learning environment. I'm looking at the third page. And again, I'm just picking one randomly. Identify and embed practices and instruction and assessment that support student achievement of, student achievement of 21st century skills. So critical thinking, problem solving, the use of technology in their daily practices. That's 21st century skills. That needs to be a message that comes from me to the principals. That needs to be a message that comes from me to the school buildings. Because if these are, if that's in my goal, then hopefully, when Sam and other students are in class, that trickles down to them, and there's a, there's a alignment in the entire district based on this. Because I look at this, and I say, you know, we need, we need to be, we need to be doing that. And it pushes me to make sure that happens, and that's how, that's how that plays out for our students. So I, you know, I hear what you're saying about, you've got this employee, me, and you want to, you want to provide a thoughtful evaluation of them. At least that's what I think I'm hearing you say.
Absolutely, right. And I don't want to shortchange him.
And in terms of that evaluation, you know, I also want that feedback. And I also see it as it plays out in the schools. Principals come to me and say, Peter, what are your goals? What are you, what are you working on? Give me your goal statements. Because they're going to build their goals off of that, and then their teachers are going to, their teacher teams are going to build their goals off of what the principal puts in their goals. And that's why I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place at providing you the mumbo jumbo that you have and trying to move the district forward in the achievement of 21st century skills.
Can I speak to the process too? Because...
Please.
Even though, even though I retired before this became, you know, cast in stone, I worked under a goal-setting process. I mean, and it's obvious to everyone, you can't do everything at the same time. If you want to make improvement, you've got to focus on what things you're going to tackle to improve. So two to three goals, you can make improvement within a year. Peter picked some very strong goals, and I'm sure many of his colleagues thought he was a little crazy in saying that he was going to reach 51%.
He did.
So what he's trying to do is set goals that he can use to move the system forward. The format you hear, I think, is really giving you a hard time.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Well, in the way the first goal is laid out.
But the other thing is, whenever you're evaluating someone, it's not easy. It's not like a multiple choice test where you can add up the numbers, and you do the percentile, and it comes out to 98%. Well, when you have to make an evaluation, and we need to tell Peter how good his job is. Is it sort of good? Is it real good? Is it in need of improvement? Well, the state gave us this rubric to help us. Like, standard one is instructional leadership. He's our instructional leader, right?
Yep.
Okay. An educational leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schools. So we need to know whether he's actually done that or not. Has he done it to the best he can do? So the state gives us a rubric. We might think he's unsatisfactory. We might think he needs improvement. Proficient, exemplary. Well, you might think that he needs improvement, and I might think he's proficient, and Ellen might think he's exemplary, but we got to give him one grade. So how are we going to figure it out? Well, the state gives us a picture, all right? In order for Peter to be exemplary, he has to empower his administrators to employ strategies that empower the staff to create standards. That word empowered means that he's the example, and he's giving them the power to do it, and giving them all the example he needs to do, that they need to get there. If he's, if he's just proficient, he's providing support and assistance for administrators to learn. All right? He's no longer, you know, the model that they're following, and they're going to do the, you know, they're empowered to do it, and he showed them how to do it. Now he says, well, I'll give you the assistance. So basically, what we're doing when I say use this to evaluate some of these things is we're looking at what the state says he should be able to do. And they give us a picture so that we can, when you use rubrics like this, a large number of people can agree on the same topic, that without this rubric, you wouldn't.
Right. But if you take that rubric, so there's forty-two of them, there's forty-two standards there.
Mm-hmm.
There's four.
There's four.
That's 168 things you have to consider when you're going through Peter's. And just as a little, let me finish. So just as a little lead-in, and I appreciate you doing that, is evaluating the superintendent on the new Massachusetts Educational Evaluation System. I got this at my training last year, and this is a guide for school committee, school councils, and parents. And when you go to the second paragraph, let me just read the first one. "In the interest of providing clarity to our members and our colleagues in education, as well as to parents, students, and interested members of the community, MASC has provided this document as a guide to understanding Massachusetts Educated Evaluation System as it relates to superintendents of schools." Sounds good. Now, let's go to paragraph number two. "More than 375 pages of additional information, including copies of relevant state law, regulations, guidelines, instructions, and matrices that highlight individual evaluation standards, may be downloaded from the Mass Department of Elementary and Education, Secondary Education's website." I close my case right there. This is ridiculous.
Bureaucracy.
Exactly. Bingo.
You know, you asked about all the paperwork the teachers are doing. This is part of it.
Yeah, it is. And I'd rather just be able to sit here and just, we can just kick it around, kick Peter around, you know, and just say, hey, is he doing a good job or isn't he? It's like, we come, that's why if we, I'm, I know I'm coming off the wrong way, but it's like, I don't feel like we're providing Peter with any good feedback if we just follow this standard. It's like, what am I going to be able to give him? That's why I'm sort of like, somebody tell me what I'm supposed to do then. Because I'd rather just sit with Peter and say, hey, listen, you know, we went through this, this, and this, it's like, through the policies, hey, I like the way you did this, didn't like the way you did that. Can we approve here? I don't know how we can give him a feedback.
Can you do that? Can you put that down in an email? Send it to Ellen, and Ellen will put it all together. If we each put that down in an email, Ellen can put it all together.
Right. But you're saying I had to follow the 168 things.
I'm not saying you have to. Well, first of all, it's not 168.
Well, it's forty-two, and then there's four.
No, there are standards and indicators, but now we're getting into educational jargon, which is going to throw you over the edge.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't want to get into...
I'm already there.
I don't want to get into educational jargon. But we can use this to help us, all right? Use this as a tool to help you. But if you find it's a tool that you can't work with, don't work with it. Do your own thing. Write down your own comments. It's going to be Ellen's job to put it all together.
Is that acceptable to you, Ellen, as a chair?
Yep. And any comments that come back to me, Peter needs to be copied on them as well.
See, I'm not sure why we would do that initially. Well, I'm not sure why, why they have to go through...
It's his personnel file. He has the right to review it.
Right. But as a committee, though, aren't we, I mean, it's, everything's supposed to be out in public.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if Peter gets it beforehand, it doesn't seem like that's being very transparent.
Doesn't change the information. Prior to the meeting, Ellen and I reviewed it with the attorney for the school committee, and his suggestion was that the employee, any employee...
Okay. Is that consistent with the way the rest of the district goes?
Any employee has the right to know what's going, what's going into their, being considered in their evaluation.
Right. But you're getting this before the committee has discussed your performance.
And then that discussion is even, takes place in public.
Right, right. But that's the world that you live in. I mean, that's...
And I'm, that's the way it is, yeah.
Right. But I'm just saying, is it consistent with, you know, the way, you know, a third-grade teacher is going to be evaluated?
Actually, the way the third-grade teacher is evaluated is kind of an open dialogue back and forth between the administrator and the teacher.
They see all of those...
Everything is seen. Everything is visible. If the administrator says something, the teacher has the right to say, well, here's another piece of documentation. So it is, it's a, it is a definite back and forth where they see it all, they see all of the information.
Now, if you have a draft of something that doesn't go to Ellen, then I don't see that, but that's the same as a teacher. If someone walks through a classroom where it's, and does an evaluation of a teacher, and they have, they took some notes, not all those notes are submitted in the evaluation, but all of the things that are submitted for consideration in the evaluation are seen by the employee.
Is that what, is that what MASC recommends as far as the way the process has worked? So if I have my comments, and before Ellen gets a chance to evaluate them, Peter's already seen them.
No, they, we, you send, you would send the same email.
Right, right, right. That's what I'm saying. But if Ellen doesn't pick it up for three days, not that she wouldn't, but I'm just saying, if you were away, and I get, I sent it to Peter, Peter's already had a chance to go through, digest it, and this and that, and it's like, well, I'm evaluating Peter, why, and I'm sending it to the chair, why wouldn't I send it to the chair and let Ellen? Because maybe there's something in there that, you know, Ellen needs clarification on.
Me seeing it doesn't change it. It's still your thoughts. It's still...
Yeah, I wouldn't think that Peter would go in there and change it so that it looks different.
No, I'm not asking him to change it, but I just, I don't know, there's just something that just doesn't seem, you know, transparent to me. It's like that, I'm doing an evaluation, and it's, I mean, if, is that how it works when you, you know, you know, work in Felicia's? It's like, well, here's a draft of mine. It's not final, so I want Felicia to look it up.
No, 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 no. Let me do this one.
We were discussing before.
Yeah. Let me, let me, so you've got a third-grade teacher, and you've got, the principal comes in and does an evaluation, and then you've got someone, someone else will come in and do an evaluation. will come in and do an evaluation and add information. I should say, they don't do an evaluation, they do an observation. So, this person does an observation, and this person does an observation, and they submit both of those pieces of information to a file. The teacher gets to see the information that's being submitted on those observations. Those observations ultimately become the evaluation. So, as the information for the evaluation goes in, the observed evidence...
At the, at that time?
Closes in.
Before it is final.
Correct.
All right, if that's consistent with what the district's doing, then I'm okay with that.
And it's consistent with the advice of council. To be quite honest with you, personally, I'm not all hung up on it, because I think no matter, no matter what you say in your email to Ellen, if you still strongly about it when we come back to open session, you're going to say, "No, I don't, Ellen, I don't agree with your summary, and I want this to be a stronger statement in it." And then, and then that's open, and that's public, and that's the way that is, and then in the end, I'll let you...
It's a public discussion.
Right, well, then, all I'm asking for, then, and I just want someone to lay out for me what the expectation is for me as far as when I evaluate Peter. What, what steps I have to go through. I'm humbly asking that for it to be in writing.
Be in writing?
Yeah, I want, I want, I want something in writing so I know what I'm supposed to do. I mean, we should have a policy on this. We don't.
Have a written policy as to, these are, this is meant as a tool. It's what the same thing we're using for the teachers. It's meant as a tool to sort of get the thought process going.
Well, with all due respect, then, why is, if it's a tool, then why don't we have it all laid out? Why isn't it already, why do, why do we, I get pieces of paper that say, "Here, figure this out." No, someone lay it out for me. Shouldn't, shouldn't be that difficult.
Fortunately, we're basing it off those 375 pages that are downloadable.
Exactly. And that's where it's like, this is ridiculous, bureaucracy at the highest.
And I'm trying...
This shouldn't be that difficult.
And I'm trying to serve two purposes. I'm trying to, I'm trying to be evaluated by my committee, and I'm also trying to drive the district forward with my, with my goals that everybody keys into, so...
And you shouldn't have to do two separate things, one for us and one for them.
Yeah, and I didn't create, none of us created this mess. I don't, I don't disagree with the fact that it's cumbersome and bureaucratic and...
Right, right, but still, you know, I know we're going to get, we haven't got to a yes, but as far as your goal, you know, well, I'll have my comments when we get to that part.
When I, when I researched this last year, it was clear that this is by agreement with the school committee, so the school committee has local authority over, over my evaluation and how that's done, so...
Right, but we're, to using the rubric, you know, and I, I was under the impression that you are going to go through and see how you touched on the rubric, you know, on these two goals. That's not there, so we're going to have to do that. And not that, I don't know if I'm putting time into it, but I just want somebody to tell me what my, the expectation is, not, "Here, go through this." I don't know what this is. I'm sorry, I just, I don't get it. I think this is, we've made it way too difficult.
So, I had to, I had to defer to the committee in terms of how they want to evaluate me. I don't, I don't...
My point was is that I was going to go through parts of this rubric, not every single part of it, because I want to pick and choose certain parts of it, evaluate those areas, send an email off to Peter and Ellen based upon what I think is where he stands in each one of these boxes, and how he's performed against each one of those boxes, and make some additional comments of how I feel. And that's the way I was going to approach it.
And then maybe some areas that you feel more strongly, you want to add more information to?
And maybe it's easier for me, because I do this at work a lot, so, in evaluations. It's, it's not exactly the same, but it's fairly similar in choosing categories and choosing, you know, whether it's unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. We have different standards where I am, but it's similar, and I, and I do this often. So, for me, I understand, I guess, what I need to do.
And my intent was to go through the rubric and choose the standards that I felt were covered by his goals, and use the rubric to determine how well he had succeeded in reaching those goals, and always include my own comments as to things that could be changed, improved, or avenues for next year.
But are we holding him to all 42?
We're holding him to the two goals that he developed.
Right, but let me read to you what our vote was last year. Accept the superintendent of Abington Schools' goals and to use superintendent's goals in the Massachusetts Superintendent's Rubric for evaluative purposes. That's what we voted.
Right.
Okay, so, are we using all 42? You know, are we going to pick and choose which ones? I mean, because then it gets subjective, it's like, well, you know, I like Peter, but I don't think he did that good in this area, so I'm going to skip this rubric. I'm not saying anybody would do that, but it's like, let's establish some, some round rules here.
Could I give a suggestion here? I think, because we're also evaluated on this, I think that it is hard to go through one by one in 42 without, you know, becoming frustrated in general, anybody, but I think if you give an overarching, standard one is about instructional leadership, highlight your focus areas in standard one. Same thing, and go down. Management and operations, family and community engagement, and then professional culture. Everything we do could fall under any and all of those categories. And your goals link right to instructional leadership, link right to professional culture, and then the management with the resources and everything else that goes. So, I think that perhaps, you know, a way of moving forward may be that, you know, you consider that, that might be more helpful, because in the past, we used principles of effective leadership and principles of effective teaching, and we always had to give bullets of, okay, where are we at? So, it might be something to think about in moving forward.
And I want to sit, and I'm sitting back purposely, because I don't want to be perceived as driving my evaluation, so I don't want to...
Right, and so I'm just asking, somebody let me know what I'm supposed to do, because right now, if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist, so I don't know what I'm supposed to do. That's the way I'm looking at it. I really don't know what I'm supposed to do.
So, any more discussion? Are we looking for, are you needing a pattern or process? Are you clear on it?
I'm clear on it, but do we, do we need to meet as a committee to select certain ones of these that we want to evaluate Peter on so that we're all consistent in selecting the same element?
Can I make a suggestion that, first of all, we determine whether we are going to evaluate him on the indicators, these standards, or are we evaluating him on the goals that he chose, which I believe is what we are supposed to do? Or you can do a double, you can do a double evaluation. You can evaluate on the goals, and you can evaluate on the standards.
We decreed it last year that it would, that I'd provide goals.
Right.
Right.
They were measurable, timed goals, and then people could use the rubric to hit other areas of my job performance that they wanted to comment on. That was the, that was the vote of all read.
If the committee wants something in writing, I would be happy to take a stab at writing up a process. And I could send it to Ellen, or send it to Teresa, and it could be sent out to others. But that puts the evaluation off another month, because we would have to agree on using that process before we could put that process into effect.
I'm okay with that, because I just want to make sure that Peter gets a fair and complete evaluation, as everybody does here.
I think that's what we all...
Yeah, everybody wants that. I'm not, but I just want to make sure I know how I'm doing it. There's a lot here.
All right, I guess, can I make a motion to have Kathy present a preliminary process to evaluate Peter and present it to us before the next school committee meeting?
I'll get it to Teresa, and she can send it out to everyone.
So, do we need to have a vote on that? Okay, so Mike's made the motion.
Yeah.
Anyone second? Is there a second on Mike's motion?
What was the motion again?
To have Kathy write up a process so that we can all evaluate it before Peter's, before the next school committee meeting, so that we can have an evaluation process in place for Peter.
So, are we going to, are we going to review Kathy's proposal at the next meeting?
No, no. We would, she would have it written, we would, we would, we would make comments to it before the next meeting, so that at the next meeting, we would have a process and a proposal to go forward.
Yeah, but isn't that a violation of open meeting? We can't, that's deliberation.
What I was hearing was that Kathy would create something and bring it back to everybody to vote the process at the next meeting.
The process would be voted at the next meeting, and then the evaluation could go forward.
Yes, right.
Yes, I think that's what...
Right, right, yeah.
That's what I meant to say.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, I'm okay with that. But, but there won't, we're not deliberating out of session, we're going to come back next month and say, "Okay, listen, this is our understanding of the process." Right, okay.
So, that's Mike's motion.
I'll second. Can someone read their motion?
Kathy would develop a process.
Yeah.
And the members would comment on the process.
At our next meeting.
At the next meeting. So, everyone will, Kathy will develop it and share it with everyone. Kathy develops the preliminary process, and then that process will be presented at the next school committee meeting.
For discussion.
For discussion. And a vote.
All right. I second that.
All in favor?
All right. So, goals for next year. The student learning goal is similar to last year's, and I, I want to, I want to say again, as we go through this MCAS data, I want to, I'm not looking for people to approve these tonight. I want more time with the data to tune these in. As we discuss my goals for the coming year, I'm offering the following student learning professional practice goals for your consideration. These goals focus on aligning the district in all subject areas and at all levels on student achievement. I've also attached the Massachusetts Model Educator Evaluation System, evaluation, Part Three, Guide Rubrics and Model Rubrics for Superintendent, Administrator, Teacher. Appendix A, Superintendent Rubric, the much-discussed rubric, for your approval. I look forward to getting your input and collaborating with you on my goals. So, I've provided a student learning goal that pushes us to raise student achievement as measured by the MCAS test above the state average in terms of, in terms of student growth and achievement. I've also included those locally-developed, district-determined measures, which are, as I described earlier, those things that are done exactly at the classroom level, that are all logged, calibrated, and teachers base their goals on in classrooms. The reason I'm providing you that is because it's important for me across the district to make sure that those get implemented with fidelity, that we're doing a good job with those things. And if I put that in my goal, then other people will make that important in their goals across the district. Then I added that the high-need subgroup will show at least a 10% increase in their MSGP, which is that growth percentile. That, I, that's the portion that I might want to consider adjusting, because as I look at that, in some areas, that's going to push the student growth percentile well above the state average for a high-need subgroup. We have a high-need subgroup that you're going to hear about in our next school committee meeting that is, is struggling. The state has only identified a high-need subgroup for the last two years. This is only the second year they've identified this high-need subgroup. At the next school committee meeting, you're going to hear data, a data analysis presentation on the MCAS scores, so that you can see where this group is in the district and how we want to improve their achievement. And so, I focused on them in this, and I might, I might propose more clearly rolling out that specific goal. In terms of professional practice, during the 2014-15 school year, through ongoing meetings at all levels and focused professional development, student achievement data will be effectively used to inform and drive instruction. Evidence of successfully calibrated, district-determined measures, DDMs, and documented use of data to inform instruction at the classroom level provided through Abington's Teacher Evaluation System. So, that's teachers using data as I described. Maybe it's a reading test. So, that I've got 25 students in my class, and five of them are at the third-grade reading level, 10 are at the fourth-grade reading level, and 10 more are at the, at the fifth-grade reading level. And so, the teacher will use that data to drive instruction to make sure that they're pushing those students who are reading at the upper-grade level even farther, but then bringing those students at the lower reading levels up to help them catch up in focusing instruction in a way that'll help them. That's, that's what district determined measures are, and that's why I think that goal's important. Having said all of that, over the next month, I would appreciate if people would provide me what, input in, on what my goals ought to be. And what I was going to propose to you tonight was that we use that superintendent's rubric that Massachusetts uses for that discussion, and that I'm available to meet with people and discuss those goals, so that I can hopefully come back to a school committee meeting after I've met with people who are interested in doing that and focusing my goals, and then present goals for the committee to consider. That's, any questions? People, I have.
I don't have any questions right now. I think I'd like to take a look at this and then look at the rubric and meld them together.
Adjust it a little bit.
So, what's the next step?
I'm inviting people to provide me direction and feedback on what they're looking for in my goals. And although, I mean, the committee can do whatever it wants in terms of my evaluation, I was suggesting that the rubric that Massachusetts uses would be a good place to start that discussion. But that doesn't, that doesn't mean you have to. People could use something else. I could find, honestly, you could tell me you don't like the color of my tie. I could, I could find tie colors under probably, you know, providing good meetings or support, or engaging community support in that rubric someplace, so... It's what Massachusetts is using to evaluate superintendents, which is why I brought it to the committee.
And the MCAS results will be presented at our next meeting?
I was hoping to bring that to the next meeting, yep. Just a factual analysis of the highs and the lows, strengths and weaknesses of the last MCAS administration.
So, these are for more informational, food for thought for the committee?
They're what I'm proposing...
Okay.
With the caveat that I think I'm going to make some adjustments to that high-needs goal that I've given to you. But, and, and, you know, you're the school committee, you can adjust all of them.
10%.
Yep.
We basically need to sign off on his goals, that we agree that those are what he's going to be working on.
Other questions?
No.
Not at this time.
The, I mean, next one.
So, we, there's, there's no motion, and any thoughts or questions?
No. I'm just looking for people's input on the, on the coming year, for the next month, so I can bring something back to everybody that hopefully people will support at the next meeting.
Next, we have the update on our school building committee.
So, we've already started planning meetings. Our next meeting is the evening of, for November 4th. We have a building committee meeting. The next phase for the building committee will be, there was a, the communication, we desired to make sure that we had the membership going forward with this... we desired to make sure that we had the membership going forward with this phase of the building committee, that in place, that first of all is required by MSBA, we already do, but that we check with all the members of the current school building committee to make sure they wanna soldier on with us, because if, if people's goal were to get this approved, and then they wanna be replaced, we, it's important, because there's gonna be a lot of, there's a lot of work that now begins. Now, now the work begins. There'll be multiple evening meetings, they'll be public, they'll be open, the website's available. And so once we get that membership on the Abington School Building Committee solidified, then we need to secure the professional services of the architect and the, of the owner's project manager and the architect. I would be shocked if the building committee did not wanna move forward with the current owner's project manager and, and architect. I know that they will, because they've done such a great job, but that's on the next agenda that evening. And so it's an open process, the website's available for people, the meetings are open meetings, they're all posted, and we invite people to participate. And we're excited about the, the work of building a new school. So. Love questions?
No, I just, another comment I have is, you know, here's 90-plus million dollars withdrawn on you. There's a goal. I mean, you have to manage this process. I mean, I, to me, I, I mean, you're, you're the point person on this. I mean, I know you have people you have to rely on, but unless I'm missing something, you're the CEO of this district, and everybody on this project goes through you.
I'm very lucky that I have wonderful support, but it's a lot of work.
Right, so I think we need to consider that when you talk about goals.
And I'm excited about the work. I mean, I can't wait to, to, just, I said it, we started the meeting, I cannot wait to design the best building for Abington. You know, so. You know, we also have a budget, and we have a negotiation that's about to begin, and we have a lot of things going on in the district. So it's gonna be a very, very, very busy time for the school department. So, anyway, I don't wanna go off on a tangent, but that's, point well taken.
Do you anticipate that committee changing at all, there?
No, I think, when I, when I talk about the committee changing, I really just talk about, maybe just, I, I don't wanna speak for the chairman. I think it's, I think it's a quick, yeah, I think it's a quick discussion with the members of the Abington School Building Committee that says, okay, we got this approved, now, now we have to go into the next phase, they're gonna be, I mean, we're talking, there are gonna be many, many evening meetings, many early morning meetings. You know, last time we did a every other week Friday morning meetings, every week Friday morning meetings, and then we were up to several evening meetings a month on top of that, so. We need to make sure people are still on board with that, 'cause if we don't, we won't have a quorum. And this is all done by, by committee openly, so.
And there's a number of positions, as we talked about, that are required by MSBA, there's about 14 positions that they require community members to be on, someone who's experienced in HVAC, someone who's an architect, someone who has experience with building, maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. And then there are additional members. So, you know, we have, we have a large committee, but they were very involved in the last couple of years.
What is the school committee's role with that committee?
You have a member on that committee.
Hello?
No, I, I understand that, but is that committee autonomous? I mean, they, we don't have any, it's, is that, so is, is it the selectmen that appoint that committee? Who pointed the committee?
No, they didn't, they, they.
They appointed their member, and this committee sent a member to be.
Right, but there's, how many, 20 people on the committee now?
22.
So what's the, what's the governance over that committee? What, what law drives that?
MSBA has, as Felicia mentioned, there are 14 people required to be on it. The school superintendent, town manager, member of the finance committee, member of the school committee, member of the Board of Selectmen.
And she could be certified.
Right. That's Felicia. Then there are certain members of the community, there's a certain number of members of the community that have to be on there, people with engineering and architectural experience from the community, community representative, and so that's, I, I'm not remembering all of them, but that's how you get to the 14. But the, what, what we have beyond that are additional that Abington has, that are allowed by MSBA, and, and then, you know, it's an open meeting law, through, under open meeting law, and then the committee votes each of these, each phase. And then, as you know, when, before a submittal is made, then it came back to this school committee, and then the finance committee, and there were joint meetings in terms of an approval process, with the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
I'm sorry, I said finance committee, Board of Selectmen and the school committee.
And that process will continue that way.
To, what, this is my first time building a school.
Right. Hopefully it'll be your last.
I, my understanding is that we're kinda done with the design of the school, which were the earlier submittals that were required to be approved, what it was, the configuration and what it was gonna look like.
Right.
And now the submittals, I believe, are more through MSBA in terms of construction documents. That's the next phase that we go into.
Public procurement process.
Correct. So the first is that they, they develop their construction documents to then go out to bid. So you're required to submit to the MSBA at, I think it's, I think there's three times, it's like 30%, don't quote me on the numbers, but 30%, 60%, then 100%. And MSBA reviews your documents, so then you go out to, for a public bid.
So in terms of educational programming, grade configuration, site, size, you've, you've already considered all of those things. Now, the bid documents have to be created. So with certainty, the documents they have have determined the cost. So the cost is not gonna go above the, the projected cost of the building. So, but now, the, the documents need, they don't, they don't take that extra step in creating bid documents until you have an approved project. They get you to the point where you know how much it's gonna cost, so that this next year is really about creating bid documents, and then putting them out to bid, securing, and that's all driven by mass procurement regulations and laws. And then it's going to be selecting a contractor, and then subcontractors, and then managing a construction project. Now, other things will happen, like we'll have to come up with a detailed plan for, for the site, because people are still gonna work at the town hall, people are still getting to the library, kids are still going to school at Abington High School. And so during, during construction, all of that needs to be worked out, so that, you know, in terms of our sports groups, we have to figure out, you know, the first thing that's gonna happen is the construction of the multiple, multiple purpose playing fields, so that soccer, lacrosse, at least have those in place when these fields are taken over. So, Meg?
Oh, yeah, no, no, thank you.
Explaining it?
Yeah.
So I don't think that there's, can't think of any more approvals. I think it'll be up to the school committee.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So moving on, other matters than before. American Education Week is November 17th through the 21st, and I have a proclamation that I'm gonna read. American, it's in your packet. American Education Week, a proclamation. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality, and whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future, and whereas education employees, be they custodians or teachers, bus drivers or librarians, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism, and whereas schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now therefore, I, Ellen Killian, serving as chairperson of the Abington School Committee, do hereby proclaim November 17th through 21st as the 93rd Annual Observance of American Education Week, signed this first day of October 2014. And we should probably mention that during this time, any Abington citizens that wanna stop by and visit our schools, they need to follow the, our practice where they enter the front door of whatever school they're gonna visit, sign in at the principal's office, and follow the policy in the school, or visitor pass, before going anywhere. That's our, that's our practice every day. And this has been posted in our schools and around town. Did a little history on it, and we found out it started after World War I to encourage some of the military that was returning back to get back on track if needed.
This goes back, you know, 93 years, World War I, where the fighting force, there had a, had a, 25% of that fighting force was illiterate, and to, to improve their lives in, in our country, and help them, and also educate a fighting force for World War I, this, this was enacted in, in, in schools across America. And so this is just a continuation of that tradition. People are welcome to come and see, and be a part of the lives of their kids in schools, you know, we encourage that. So this is more of a commemorating the importance of, of education than it is a change in our daily practices.
Hey, can I just make a, I'm not trying to be a pain here, but I think we just need to be careful with, we make proclamations, these, should these be approved by the school committee before they're, they're posted out there?
Yeah, I didn't take any action on behalf of the school committee, it was really a ministerial act, signing off on this proclamation. It's been going on.
Right, I, no, I, I know it's been, that's, I'm just saying this, because you, you know, you could have a, in a few years, a school committee chair that wants to proclaim something else, and says, well, I don't need approval for that, but I'm gonna do it for this. I just asking that be considered in the future. You know, what's, what's, again, what's the policy?
Are you asking if we have a policy about signing off on?
Yeah, I don't know, I, I don't know what, what, what the practice is. You know, I'm not, it's not that I'm against it, it's just, what's to stop a chair from doing a proclamation for something else that they have an interest in, and the school committee just gets excluded from it? I'm not saying you did that here, I just, I know this is, but it's, it can turn into a slippery slope, if you don't have a policy or practice in place, also a policy. Because I, I would say the same thing about the next letter too, as far as, and this is even more important, about the contract negotiations.
I mean, I really wasn't taking any action on behalf of the school committee, I was signing a proclamation to let people know that this is, what this week is dedicated to.
Right, but it's on behalf of the school committee, is it, the way I see it?
I, Ellen J. Killian, serving as chairperson of the Abington School Committee.
You hit, you do hereby proclaim. And I know you have to do that, I'm just saying, it's like, if we could do, you know.
So are you asking if we have a, have a policy?
Well, I know we don't have a policy. So.
The invetorial, I guess. Are you saying that you'd like us to have a policy on that?
I just know, I'd like to know what the standards are, the, the policy is, as far as, you know, communication from the school committee. This is a proclamation, not the one in negotiations. I don't know when we're supposed to be included in things, and when, when we're not.
Well, I checked with legal counsel, and he felt that it was perfectly fine for me to sign that. I'm taking his words exactly, it's a ministerial act. I wasn't doing anything, taking any action.
Okay.
I have no problem with that, as long as, as counsel has approved it, I, I will go along with what counsel has said.
So I don't know, maybe, so there's no action on that? It'll be posted in the schools? We'll move on to number five. It's regarding our Abington Cable Access and Media, our CAM as their abbreviation is.
So, at our last meeting, it was noted that on the, on Abington Cable Access Media, on that website, that not all of the meetings that have taken place are actually available to the public. And so I called Henry DeCarlo, and I asked him if, if those could please be updated. I do not know, and I'm guessing that they actually haven't been to this point. He agreed that he would look into it and, and get those updated on his, on that website. So I did follow up on that, and he indicated he would take care of it. However, there may be need for more of a discussion with regard to this topic, so.
Yeah, and did we determine how the last meeting got put out on YouTube? Not that I'm complaining, I'm just curious how it got out there.
No idea. I, as I, I could share with people, you had asked me that question in an email about how the last meeting got out on YouTube, I can, I can, you know, nobody here did it that I know of. I mean, I guess somebody could have, because anything that's a file that's available, you can post on YouTube as an individual. Unfortunately, there are portions of, you know, everything on anybody's cellphone can be posted on YouTube.
Right, right.
There's a great, there's a great thing on YouTube with Kids at Abington High School, The Flash Mob. Right? It was an awesome publication. So anybody can, anybody can do that. And as I, as I looked at that, Paul, when you mentioned that, I noticed that there are other town departments that have other meetings on YouTube also, and it seemed to me to be hit or miss. I mean, I saw, I saw some Board of Selectmen meetings out there, I think I saw some Finance Committee meetings out there.
Well, it's just interesting, so you have our last meeting on YouTube, but it's not on the cable. You can't, it's not there. So how did it get out there?
Our last meeting was on cable, I've seen it.
No, on, on the website, I'm sorry, it's on the website, yeah, it's on the website.
Don't have any idea.
Yeah.
So, is anybody looking for us to pursue anything else regarding this? Is there a motion, or?
Well, do we know what capabilities we are available to the school department, whether it's on the website or the local cable? You know, just laying out in writing what, where, what's available to us?
I know that Abington CAM has, has one full, one part-time employee, and that's it.
Well, I'm just talking, like, say, on, whether on the website or even on the, the cable channel, like, programming, what, you know, we can put out there and what's available to us. 'Cause sometimes you go onto the education channel, and it's just, the same stuff runs over and over again, and it's like, you know, we've got, you know, events that we could put out there that, you know, rather than run for three hours, just these same notices would.
Yeah, and, and I'm glad you asked that question, because it's important that people know that we have a, we in Abington have a technology office of, well, hopefully we have to hire somebody, because we just did a resignation, right now it's one person and a part-time person. But once, right, once we hire, it'll be two full-time people. And those two full-time people make, making sure that the computers and the software in the schools is running, all the, all the technology people use to make presentations. And so that's their primary mission. So putting those other things on cable is what they get to. And also that content needs to be taped and then edited. We're, we're very fortunate that we have a volunteer with us tonight filming this, who came from soccer, you know, and so Bill's been awesome.
I think we'd be remiss not to thank Bill and Norm. They take care of getting our graduations filmed, and proms, and honor societies, and...
But it takes editing too.
It takes the editing.
And if I could just toot Bill's horn for a second, through this building committee process, there were meetings that not everybody could get to, whether they were finance committee members or members of the Board of Selectmen. He would come and he would film our meetings, and then create CDs that night for delivery to people's houses the next day, so that we could keep people up to speed. So the answer to your question is, you know, we're, we're probably deficient in that area of publishing everything we could, but it's because we have to rely on those extra hours to, to get those things done. Like, you know, and so that was a critically important thing, and Bill was nice enough to help us with those things.
Yeah, Bill's like the Martin Scorsese of local cable, if you ask me.
But I think that there's two, I mean, there's kinda two sides. One is the content that we provide for the educational channel, which... One is the content that we provide for the educational channel, which is, that what we try to provide, and that's the taping of assemblies, et cetera, et cetera, in schools. And then there's the student.
So is there discussion or an emotion or?
I have nothing. Park testing, it's an agenda item we've been carrying. What I've included in your packet is a letter from the commissioner. So what's happened is there have been people that have asked to opt out of testing, and this is a letter, I will not read it to you, I'll just, you know, basically give you a summary that says, there's no ability to opt out of these tests. That, and, and so if you send your child to school on a testing day, we're responsible to give them a test. If they choose not to take it, we're not gonna force somebody to take a test. If we have to create another avenue for, a place for them to go and, and read a book or do something else during the testing period, you know, another educationally appropriate activity will do that. Because at the same time, we don't ever wanna say, well, just don't send them to school, because then that's advocating for truancy. We're not gonna do that either. So I just, that came across my desk, so I thought I'd include that under the sections. Answer any questions people have, but that's more informational about that than anything else.
Anything else? The next thing we have is, we called it School-Community Outreach. And I know Peter used to graciously have open houses or coffee get-togethers with his famous cookies at the administration building. One thought that, I was thinking that we could maybe do a open house or a coffee, put on by the school committee, perhaps at the library one night. And this would be informal, it's not an open meeting, it's an informal setting and it's a time and a place for the community to stop by, meet us, share ideas over a cup of coffee. Just putting it out there, I don't know if there's any interest by the committee or what their thoughts are. We thought maybe a, possibly a Tuesday night, maybe have it at the library in their community room there.
I mean, that might sound like a good idea. I actually, there's somebody I work with who's on a school committee member, I believe, in one of the New Hampshire towns on the border, and they do something similar. They say they don't get much participation, but they do hold them regularly, so.
More cookies for you then?
More cookies for me.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a nice idea, yeah.
I think it, you know, there are some people that maybe don't wanna hop in here on a Tuesday night. And, you know, provides a nice time. So we'll, maybe we can see if we can get, how it works, get in the room at the library and get some dates, some.
Coordinate dates.
Some possible dates.
And there'd be no violation of open meeting?
It's just strictly informal, we're not gonna talk policy or anything like that, it's.
People have to be careful not to talk about my evaluation.
Can we talk about your tie?
You can't talk about, you can't, to be sure, you can't deliberate on any agenda item.
Yeah.
But, you know, you can have a conversation about other things, so.
Do you wanna be there, Sam?
Sure.
Okay. Maybe we'll.
In the coming Tuesday.
Yeah, well, maybe we'll see what.
All right, I'll try to check up tomorrow about the process to reserve that space.
Yeah. Thank you. And then we move on to dates to remember. Friday, October 31st is an all-day professional development day. There's no school for Abington students. It's also Halloween and on behalf of the Abington Police Department, they ask that everybody keep an eye out for children.
Can I just make a comment? I also believe the football game has now been moved to Halloween night?
Yes.
It's on Saturday?
No, it's Friday.
Friday night.
Because of the weather, I guess.
Oh, okay.
Tuesday, November 4th is School Building Committee at the Avenue Police Station in the Community Room at 6:30 PM. Wednesday, November 5th, Green Wave Boosters Meeting at the Avenue Police Station, Community Room at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, November 11th is Veterans Day. All school offices as well as town buildings will be closed. Tuesday, November 25th is our next school committee meeting. I'm gonna jump back. We have the AEF Trivia Night on November 21st, which is a Friday, it's in your packet. That's at the KSC, the Knights of Columbus. I should also mention how much the AEF relies on these fundraisers and they do so much for our schools. Sorry if I skipped around. November 25th is our next school committee meeting. Wednesday, November 26th is the half-day, Thanksgiving break will begin. November 27th and 28th, all school offices and buildings are closed for Thanksgiving Forgot, National Honor Society induction is Tuesday, November 18th.
I believe it's 16th.
And it's in the P.K. Smith Room.
Yes.
At the high school. So moving on, we have the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services, Dr. Thomas.
Good evening. First, I'm requesting homeschool approval for a grade 10 student. All paperwork has been completed.
Make a motion for that approval?
Second. On favor?
Right. Thank you. Grant 274 update, I did tell you that we had been waiting to hear back from the state regarding the status, and I'm happy to report that we have $16,325 that was allocated to Abington Public Schools for professional development in the area of special education. In terms of professional development updates, our last professional development was on October 10th, a half-day. At the elementary level, there were site visits regarding the new programs for math and science and also data analysis in terms of MCAS results. And at the secondary level, data analysis regarding our MCAS results. This coming Friday, we have consultants coming in to work with our staff regarding the FOSS Science Kits and the Envision Math Training. And we, at the secondary level, have a consultant, Mike Shackelford, who will be here regarding assessment and grading. The Unified Team update is exciting. Congratulations, because the South Shore Leagues, it's the first ever unified soccer game that was held on October 9th, and it was here in Abington at Memorial Field. Abington played Rockland. The Unified Team partners with non-traditional athletes and traditional varsity athletes who serve as coaches. And the students play alongside each other. And so a special thank you to our athletic director, Peter Serino, as well as Kate Casey and Principal Terry Sullivan. Many staff attended, Peter attended, I was unable to be there because I was at a meeting on the other side of the state. However, I was able to follow it regarding Twitter, because Peter Serino and Athletic, Abington Athletics does a really nice job. We also have Sam, who I've actually asked to speak under this area, because Sam was one of the varsity athletes who also took part in the Unified Team.
Yeah, I think it's pretty special. And when Mr. Serino actually, like, he presented the idea to, like, five or six students a couple of months ago, and we were kinda all on board, and we didn't really know how it was going to work, but after the first game, it worked pretty well, and I hope they continue it. I think he's talked about doing basketball and then in the spring doing track and field. So, and I, the co-op kids really, they enjoyed it, definitely. Because they were talking about it all day in school, the whole week, and then the day after the game, they were talking about it. And it was, I thought it was really good.
And the pictures were priceless.
Yeah, it really was.
And the next game is actually this Thursday in Carver, so Abington will be playing soccer against Carver. So if anyone wants to go visit and see, it's, it's very special. And kudos to Peter Serino, to actually working hard with other athletic directors to make this the first in the South Shore League. So thanks.
What time is it on Thursday?
They're usually after school, so I think it's probably like around.
Yeah, I believe it's.
It's four.
It's gonna be early, because he set the clocks back too, and I don't think Carver has lights.
This Thursday, and then it's, but we have to take a bus over, so it's usually.
So it's 3:30 or 4:00?
3:30 or 4:00.
You can look on Peter Serino's Twitter, he puts everything on that. Abington Athletics. All right, and then the, thank you, Sam, for that, it's very exciting. All righty, so next is Special Education Parent Advisory Council update. So I just wanted to let you know about what it is, and then feel free to open up and, and ask any questions. The Special Parent Advisory Council has, the school committee of any city or town shall establish a parent advisory council on special education, and then membership shall be offered to all parents of children with disabilities and other interested parties. The parent advisory council duties shall include but not be limited to advising the school committee on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities, meet regularly with school officials, and to participate in the planning, development, and evaluation of the school committee's special education programs. And the parent advisory council shall establish bylaws regarding officers and operational procedures. And in the course of its duties under this section, the parent advisory council shall receive assistance from the school committee without charge upon reasonable notice and subject to the availability of staff and resources. So that's the big picture of it. And the, the, it's also known as SPED PAC or CPAC. And we have no current officers in place at this time. We have had officers in place in the past. And we do have a membership of special education parents that does exist and is functioning. The, in the absence, I have fulfilled the DESE expectations in terms of the parents' and rights responsibilities and holding meetings. We have meetings that have been posted, they have been posted but not at town hall. So in the future, we are going to include town hall, but they've always been posted. It's a welcoming atmosphere. We also have the cookies as well as the coffee. It's offered during the day, it's offered at night, throughout the year. Many parents attend and have attended over the eight years that I've been here, but not all parents certainly don't attend. We've had a variety of people that have come, from our local parents to parents that are in, out of, you know, have students in out-of-district placements, to interested parties such as advocates. Jeff Deal has come to, to a few of them. I meet regularly with the parents. Peter always usually attends as often as possible, and that's a time for people to give us feedback, to connect with us regarding programs and budget and, you know, any questions that they may have or any suggestions. Right now, we don't have anyone in place. And so we have nomination ballots that have been distributed. We have recently put them on the website, so they're up on the website as well. I don't know how many people go on that website, so I don't know how many people are accessing that. The schools actually put it in their notices that are sent out. They have been trying to also, you know, recruit basically through PTOs as well as school councils. I am an invited guest to that. I do not run them, I have no voting power, so I collaborate with the CPAC. And so in the absence, we make sure that we still hold meetings, because we wanna educate our special education population, our parents, and also making sure that they're aware of their special ed parents' rights and responsibilities. We're continuing to seek interest in providing community with, you know, information regarding navigating special education law as well as the process. We were commended in January 2009 in the Mid-Cycle Review, and then again in March 2012 in the Coordinated Program Review on the CPAC. But since then, we have had officers that have, you know, either not taken part or have moved on, or haven't told me that they're not involved anymore, but, you know, haven't been attending. So, but we have a lot of parents that come, that are engaged, that are interviewed, that always get back to us regarding, we've gone through an onslaught of evaluations over the course of the years. We have another mid-cycle coming up in a month, we have, you know, circuit breaker audit in another month. And so people are and have been committing to always meeting with people from the state level in terms of, of interviews, but they're not committing to the officer positions. It's a voluntary position in which there's bylaws, in which there's expectations to that. There was a brochure, was a brochure, that was on the website. That was created by former CPAC members or SPED PAC members. In my role, I don't have the authority to change that. However, checking with counsel, I have the authority to remove it, so that we removed it, and so that if the next group would like to, you know, start their own marketing tool or something of that sort, you know, we'd be able to also make that available through the website. So any questions so far? I also did check with Mary Ellen Swatter, who is our special education lawyer, and she said that this is a common occurrence, and that when it happens, regarding not being able to fill these positions, that the district documents efforts made to hold meetings and hold meetings as, as much as they can. Continue to send out nomination ballots. CPAC usually has a high turnover, because it's often because there is such poor attendance at CPAC meetings. And the goal is really to provide CPAC with, you know, autonomy and empower the group. The meetings are held according to their bylaws. And, you know, I had talked, as I said, regarding the brochure, and I have no authority over making changes to the brochure, but I do in terms of temporarily removing it until the next CPAC, you know, decides, you know, what they would like to do. So those are some of the overarching. We have it on the website, it's been out in the schools, we have nomination ballots. We're willing to take anyone that might be interested, I can walk them through the process. So, any questions on that?
How many members do we have?
As a whole, the parents that come?
Yeah.
The largest that have ever had come was sixty-two. And the smallest was four. And that didn't include at the time, you know, the board, so the board's also part of. So I'd say probably eight. It, it fluctuates, and I've told, I said at the last meeting is, we've done a variety from holding them, you know, in different places, at different schools, at North School, during the day, at night. You know, the last CPAC was not comfortable coming here to the school committee, so they asked me to present at school committee regarding their thoughts on programs. But yet they're willing, like, the last meeting that we just had, they, the group that was there was great regarding, you know, here's some thoughts regarding assistive tech, is there ability to? And I said, absolutely. And the next day, I'm in meeting with Peter and Felicia regarding, okay, let's take a look at, you know, some of the assistive technology. We have some questions about this, are we able to do this? And then I'm able to get back to these parents. So it's, it's, it's those types of, you know, important meetings that take place. We also have, you know, people, they have a lot of access to us. You know, Peter attends the meetings, they email, they call, they'll attend, you know, different things. It's, right now, I currently do not have anyone in the officer position, but at the same token, I know that I do have many special education parents who are involved, who are willing to provide feedback, who are willing to meet with DESE regarding, you know, expectations or programs or budget or any concerns that they may have. So that's where we're at regarding that. We also have a website, that if you haven't had the opportunity, please look on the website regarding our special ed. We have five different categories on there. We try to make sure that people have as much information about their rights and responsibilities regarding special education. But it would be nice if we did have a CPAC that actually was, you know, alive and well and, and were, you know, providing more information and links and informational meetings and things of that sort to our community as well. So, if anyone out there knows of anyone that might be interested, have them go through you or contact superintendent's office or my office, and we can move in that direction.
So how many current members do we have?
Who that, that come? The membership is made up of who comes and the sign-in sheet. So we keep agendas, we keep men, and it's, I mean, I have parents who are special education parents that don't ever come, so they wouldn't be considered on the, on the list, because they haven't actually come. And included in the bylaws is that in order to have a vote, that they need to have attended a meeting within the last year.
The last meeting, you said you didn't have minutes.
I take my minutes, so I'm not a CPAC chair. So apparently.
So the CPAC doesn't have any minutes.
From when they were in place, they have minutes.
But that's not what you said last time. I mean, when we, when I asked you about that, you said, when was the last time the CPAC had an official meeting?
And I held the meeting, as I stated last time, and I kept my own minutes.
No, I'm talking when the CPAC was functioning, has a functioning body.
If you're asking if it was when the officers were in place, then that will go back to approximately 2000, late 2012, 13.
So there's minutes from those meetings?
Yep.
That, that the officers approved?
That the officers wrote. That the officers wrote.
And approved?
Correct.
Okay, and there's bylaws?
Bylaws are in place.
So this is where I guess, I'm, I'm a little with this presentation is, again, if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist, is why, why isn't, why don't we have that stuff? If, if the district, the administration knows about it, you should anticipate, someone should have anticipated this question. It's like, well, why don't-
Well, what are you asking?
I'm asking, where are the minutes for the CPAC?
Well, you didn't ask for that at the last meeting, that you wanted me to present that tonight. If you want me to put things in writing, I need to have a motion by the committee on what you would like for me to present at the next meeting. So if you'd like to see minutes, or if you'd like to see the bylaws-
I asked about the minutes at the last meeting, if they existed, and you said no. You said there were no bylaws.
Not under the CPAC officers' fault.
Right, right, that's all I'm asking. If, if the CPAC has minutes, I'd like to-
So if you're asking for a current CPAC, we don't have current officers in place.
Right, but I'm looking for any CPAC minutes that we would have had.
If you had asked it that way, I would have said, we have CPAC minutes from when we had CPAC officers.
Okay, so, that, that's how this is gonna-
Do you want copies of those minutes?
Yeah, I want to see the minutes. It's like that, we actually had a functioning CPAC at one point.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, for someone just to say, oh yeah, we have it, it's like, you know, the proof is in the pudding. It's like, we need to provide it.
So are you making, are you requesting that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm requesting, as far back as the CPAC has minutes, I'd like to see those minutes. You know, and, and because, what, what troubles me is that what's, if, so if we had minutes from that CPAC from 2012 is what you're saying, that's what I just heard you say, 2012 is the last-
Last time we had officers.
Last time we had officers, which meant we should have had minutes.
Correct.
Okay, so we have that brochure that was out there that hadn't been updated since two thousand and eight. So nobody on the, the, nobody thought of mentioning that maybe we ought to update this? I, I, that's what I don't understand.
Well, who are you asking?
I'm asking anybody in the administration that like, if this is a big concern, special education for us, like, why aren't we looking at what the CPAC is doing? I mean, again, I'll say, I've been on the school committee for a year. It's never come up before.
Right, and I think that, let me finish and explain in terms of, that was a project for them. It is not a requirement that they do a brochure. It was something that four women that were in the officer positions at that time created, wanted to work on. It doesn't have to even be used again by the next group of officers. It was a marketing tool for them. They worked on it. It was their tool. In terms of the regulations, again, I have no voting power. I am a visitor.
Right, but-
And in terms of, let me finish, in terms of what the district is doing is, we are documenting our efforts. So we are showing what we're able to do.
Okay. If we're documented, where, where's the evidence?
Well, bring it.
You can bring it, if that's what you're asking.
That's what I'm, I'm asking for. I just want to make sure that we're, we're covering our base on this. I mean, it, it's, you know, membership sixty-two, four, I don't know when that happened. That could have been eight years ago. I don't know. What are we currently doing? That's all I want to know. What are we currently doing? And do we have evidence that, that we had a functioning CPAC years ago?
Currently, we have, now I'm hearing, we have no official CPAC because we have no officers, but we have people that participate in the meetings.
Right, and where's, where's the evidence that we went out and we tried to, to, to generate interest, to bring people in? And, and if we evaluated, it's sort of like, you know, why don't we have officers? What, what are we, what are we not doing? What do we need to change as far as to get people to come in and say, hey, listen, yeah, sure, I'll be an officer, yeah?
What, what I also heard is that, and I'm gonna believe Dimpner, that it's common, that, that the, I'm gonna believe the attorney, that it's common that districts don't have officers from time to time because people don't want to put their time in.
Well, I have here Massachusetts SPED PACs online. I got this last month. It's three hundred and fifty-two cities and towns in Massachusetts. Here's a hundred and fifty-five cities and towns in Massachusetts that have a website with SPED PAC online, and I looked through that, a hundred and thirty-two are actually active. That's a sizable amount of-
Of three hundred and how many?
Three hundred and fifty-one.
So half do, and half don't.
So it's a common occurrence that there are times that we don't have them running. In Abington, in the last, two last compliance that we were commended on, we had functioning CPAC that was commended by the DESE who regulates what we do. Currently, we do not have officers, but we do hold meetings on parent rights.
Okay, the guidelines here. So we, we went through an audit, and I would assume that the audit goes back to, are we in compliance with the guidelines? Page four of the guidelines is saying additional requirements. Requirements to state law, open meeting law. We violated that, and the audit missed that?
Yep.
So what type of value does the audit provide? So kind of look at it.
Let's, can we just be, oh, can we just be clear though? The violation of the open meeting law was that the agenda was not posted with the town clerk.
Right.
Right, but-
Now, I'm not saying I'm not making light of it. I'm not saying it's right.
And it wasn't intentional.
I'm not saying I'm not excusing it.
Right, I'm not saying it was-
I want to be very factual about that. It wasn't that there was a clandestine meeting and, you know, something was done, you know, it was, it just wasn't filed with the town clerk, but it was published.
It's never asked during a compliance, ever. Bylaws, minutes, agendas, signing sheets.
It's, it's page four on the requirements. I mean, requirements and state statute and regulations, it's right there.
But I'm telling you, going through the compliant office and dealing with it, I know exactly what we have to do in terms of those compliant regulations.
And they never asked that, they never asked for that?
They never asked for those specifics. They receive everything that we have. I, I hand over the binder.
And let's, let's be clear though, as long as we're dealing with the open meeting law. So when there's a C, and I want, I'm asking this as a, I'm saying something and I, I want to make sure I have it right, so I'm asking a question. We have officers in the special education PAC that, and those are, and those, they take minutes, they keep minutes, those minutes are approved according to the open meeting law. Then when you have no more officers, you say you have minutes, or you have, you have notes.
I have my own personal notes.
Right, of, of meetings.
I was clear on that last time.
Because I just don't want to get into a slippery slope where there's this, there's a misconception that we have these official minutes after there are no officers because there's no officers to approve the minutes. They're moreover your notes on meetings.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to, I didn't just want to, I didn't want to create another problem down the road with that.
So maybe going forward, can those be referred to as Dr. Thomas's notes versus-
Yeah, they're not in the CPAC binder. I'm not a member of that.
I'm just saying for maybe clarification.
Do we, and as far as the budget process, are we gonna consider, because if the CPAC needs any money, it's gonna have to come from approval by the, the annual budget process, so.
If it were to come through the school department, yes.
And if I go on past practice, they've never asked for additional monies, never for doing speakers, never for, you know, any that kind of professional development. We've offered it. We've had members that have also gone to Children's Federation, Federation for Children, I should say. They also partake in, surrounding towns also offer things, the collaboratives offer things, but they've never made a formal request in the eight years that I've been here for a specific line item in our budget.
No, the school committee is a member of the MASC. Pete is a member of the MASSS. There's a mass PAC. Why isn't the district a member of that?
And they can be.
But why aren't we? I mean, it seems like that's a good resource out there for, for people, for, for, for the PAC, for short money to actually, so why aren't we doing that?
We could do that if there's a need. There hasn't been a, there hasn't been a, a request.
A need? We don't have one. There's an absolute need. Well, I mean, to say there's a need, that there isn't a need, we don't have an offices. We don't have a PAC.
But if the, if the parents are the ones that are, that are driving the whole process, and, you know, it's a delicate situation, and they're not, they're not willing to step forward, and Dimpner's, you know, she's checked with the council.
And I'm still optimistic. I mean, we have two former CPAC members that are paraprofessionals. And we're doing something right with recruitment. However, and I said this last meeting, I can't force people to do it. And even council, I said, okay, what more can I do? And her response back to me was, the most you can do is try to persuade someone to do it, but the turnover is so high because it's the lack of participation. It really goes back to what you were saying. You might all come together for a nice coffee and cookie, but you might have three people show up. So you may say, well, is this beneficial for me to come out once a month to do it? And, and in some cases, people that are volunteering to be officers in that capacity, who have served in those capacities, you know, determine that they want to step down for whatever reason. The nice thing is, you know, we have two who were heavily involved that became paraprofessionals for us. But, you know, it's still, we're still at the same place, is that we'll continue, you know, to make sure that we have information out there, and then see, you know, in terms of recruitment.
But, so, let me just, walk me through, so, we haven't had any offices since 2012, and we have not heard from anybody that we didn't have officers for the CPAC. So a CPAC wasn't functioning. And there's a recommendation from the, ESE recommends that PACs develop procedures that result, that result in at least annual written status reports to superintendent to share with the school committee. So, did you get those reports?
No.
No, so why wasn't something done about it? And why wasn't it reported to us?
Because the organism, that, we don't have people wanting to do that.
Right, but, but you didn't even tell us that. You didn't say anything. You just were silent that we've, we've got this requirement that we need to have a CPAC or at least an effort to put a CPAC together, and was never reported to us. And you're, you're supposed to be looking for recommendations from, they're supposed to be reporting to you, at least on an annual basis, and that didn't happen.
I go to the meetings, and I sit with them, and at, at those meetings-
You do the due diligence, as the council has stated.
I've never had anybody-
You hold the meetings, you solicit feedback.
Do you think it would be helpful if I were to reach out to contact some of these parents, just to see if they feel that they're not being, not that I'm down here saying-
Oh, you can reach out.
I mean-
Well, the one thing I will say, as far as, you know, when the I, you know, sitting out on an IEP, for twelve years, nobody ever mentioned the CPAC to me during an IEP meeting, myself, never. Because to be honest with you, when I read that in the bullying policy, that was the first time I ever knew it existed.
And were you always on constant contact?
Hmm, not till the last couple of years, probably.
Or notices between classes and notices?
Regardless of constant contact, I had a meet annually for twelve years. Nobody ever mentioned it to me. I never heard of it. That's why when I saw it in the thing, I was like, what the heck is the, this special education parent advisory council? Twelve years of going through annual meetings, you know, May-June timeframe, nobody ever mentioned it to me. So there's an opportunity that we're, maybe we ought to put it, you know, as far as we go, you know, when families are going through an IEP meeting, that we at least put it out there, you know, and if we update the brochure, we make it available to people. But I know for myself, and I, I spoke to my wife, I asked her about it, and she said, I don't ever remember anybody mentioning that because I've never heard of it. So, I mean, there's an opportunity right there that we need to maybe tighten things up and, and get that out there. Because I, I do think that there's, there's, there's gotta be a couple of people out there that we're missing that would want to step up. I mean, again, I'll look at the, the vote for the new school. I mean, there's great people in this town that are willing to step up. I mean-
I would love it.
Sitting next to someone whose husband is just out of this world as far as helping everybody in this town, and there's, you know, I, not everybody can be jacked, but there's people that will step up and do this. I'm, I'm a strong believer in that. So I think we need to just look at how, how are we doing our outreach?
So the first step would be to try to get officers and then update that brochure, and then that brochure is more readily available.
Mr. Bailey's welcome to be one of our volunteers. I enjoy him thoroughly.
So is this, are we looking for a motion?
I don't, I think it's, I think it's already required that we continue to reach out for people.
Right.
Yeah, we've been, we've been requiring.
I mean, you thought we should do due diligence and be doing it.
We've been doing that.
And, and I know we, you know, create more and more subcommittees, and I'll volunteer for it. It's like, because I don't want to just dump it on other people, but I'd be willing to sit on a subcommittee. You know, Ellen, you said you want to do outreach, it's like to, to, to help generate some interest, because I don't want to be just sitting there, you know, babbling on and just complaining. It's like, I, I'll try to be part of the solution too, if, if the board feels another subcommittee is warranted. But I think, you know, as I look at, this is, this is as much a school committee responsibility as it is the administration, because the CPAC reports to us, and you only have limited-
Power.
Exactly, right.
I'm glad that you recognize that.
Oh, no, absolutely, yes.
Because it's not through lack of effort.
Right, yeah, and, and that's why I think for being shoulder to shoulder with you as we go through this, you can, you can see this, and then it's like, yeah, there's, there's a problem here, you know? See that?
I'll also tell you what the lawyer also said, our council, that if you were having major problems, you'd have a large outcry of parents that would want to be out, officers. So you can approach it two different ways. One way, meaning we have a SPED community that feels that they do have access to myself, the school committee, and the superintendent, and they do it in their way. Or we can take it that because we don't have officers currently in place, that there's a major problem. We've never had a complaint at the DESE. We've never had a complaint with the superintendent. We've never had a complaint, you know, through school committee. So-
That's not to say that people haven't had complaints with special education.
Oh, that's my job. I mean, people complain, but they have access to us to complain.
It's a, yeah.
So I'd be welcoming to a subcommittee that would like to get together, or between now and that subcommittee, you know, maybe somebody's going to sign up.
But I think even if we do have that, we, the subcommittee still should, should exist to, you know, see whatever we can as a school committee to try to help out. You know, even if it's just looking at what are the options, if, is, is mass PAC something that we want to consider? I don't know.
Yeah, and I'd like to talk to you about the purpose of it, because I don't need mass PAC, but the, the current officers might need mass PAC.
Right, right.
Or if I had parents that were requesting mass PAC, we would do that, but in terms of, you know, it would be for, you know, what is the intent?
Right.
And if it's there, I mean, we make that happen.
Right.
So I think that, you know, to generate that would be great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So do we need to, how do we?
I've got a note that you're looking for minutes. I know that.
Yeah, well-
I think he's asking about the subcommittee.
The subcommittee, yeah. Because I think that stuff, we could roll into the, to the subcommittee.
Well, the whole, I even have the binder here if you'd like to, but I can do it with the subcommittee meeting at a different time. I don't know if it's just going to be myself and Paul, or if somebody else wants to join the committee, subcommittee.
So is the motion to, or discussion here-
Are you making a motion to form a subcommittee?
I'd like to make a motion to form a subcommittee to support the administration and the Special Education Parent Advisory Council.
So is this going to be a special ed subcommittee?
Yes, yeah.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, so we need to take a vote?
Aye.
Aye. So we'd be looking to see who would like to be part of that subcommittee?
I'll do it.
So they would work with Dr. Thomas or?
Oh, giddy up.
Looking forward to it.
And so you just, as the chair, you appoint members?
I, I have to appoint, yeah.
So you don't have to take his own nomination?
No nomination, yeah.
And we'll report back next month?
Subcommittee?
Yeah, the subcommittee.
You'll report back?
Yeah, I'll report back next month.
Sure, and I can join in with you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. So moving on to new business in, I'm sorry, report of the assistant superintendent, I'm sorry, Felicia, I'm sorry.
Yeah, in your packet, you have a copy of the FY16 budget development and article planning schedule. The department heads, directors, principals, received packets actually today with budgets due back to me the end of November, then the processes that Peter and I meet with people to rule for their budget, will be prioritized at the school level. Then we'll be looking to have a budget and finance subcommittee meeting as we put our preliminary budget together with our first kind of official presentation to the school committee on January 16th. That'll be our, ah, sixth, I'm sorry, January 6th, I looked in my data. And that'll be our, that will be our, here, here, right here, thank you. And then there's still, there's conversation already with the town regarding the timing of the town meeting and with the town charter, talking about it being in April and how early that is because of the state situation with funding is so difficult to, at that early time, or it's actually not early, it used to not be early, but not closer to the end of fiscal year. There's also been some conversation among the town leadership around having an all-day Saturday budget session that will include the budget and finance school committee, of the school committee in the morning session, and then other large departments on the town in the afternoon. So we could have finance committee, board of select, and budget and finance up community committee.
Proudly, we started that trend, because you get to see a budget from beginning to end, all, at all the moving pieces at once. Because when you end up looking at a budget in bits and pieces in evening meetings for a couple of hours, you pick it up, put it down, pick it up, put it down, you have to start and stop all over again, and it, and it's just better to see it all at once. But I think that's what the town is suggesting we do. School department's been doing it for a while.
Thank you.
We'd like to get some dates for budget and finance.
Okay. When do you want to kick those off?
I think I'd like to have one sooner than later to talk about our budget presentation, the budget book. We had some conversations, the packet, about it last year, but I think it's, it's important to go through that again, having gone through all budget season and session, to make sure that we're able to provide you what you think is best.
Okay, thank you. So next, now I can say, new business and establishing of the next school committee meeting will be Tuesday, November 25th, at 7:00 PM here in the Carter Room. And then we have some information on-
I don't have anything I was going to mention. Did you want to mention?
Yep. Some really nice things here to mention. First off, we have, what we're thinking is the first time in, for Abington High School, ATN Burgoyne, he won the individual division three state championship in golf today, shooting a seventy-four.
That's great.
Which is amazing, as far as Coach Tim Hill and Mr. Serino think that that's the first time we've had an individual state in golf or in any other sport at the high school. And anybody that plays golf knows what an accomplishment that is. So that's for ATN. We also have in your packet, the list of the class of 2015, John and Abigail Adams, scholarship recipients, and, oops, I just lost it. Just to explain what that is, the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship provides a tuition waiver for four years of undergraduate education at Massachusetts State Colleges and Universities for students who are accepted. Massachusetts Public High School students automatically qualify for the scholarship when they score at the advanced and proficient levels on grade ten MCAS tests and ELA, English Language Arts, and mathematics, and have combined scores from the MCAS, ELA, and mathematics tests that place them in the top twenty-five percent of students in the graduating class in their district. Last year, we had twenty-nine recipients. This year, we have thirty-five, which is a really nice accomplishment. And we're going to read, I'm going to read their names? Yeah? Molly Atkinson, Jonathan Burbine, Christopher Burgess, Brian Caffaro, Aiden Colley, Luca Sarasani, Amy Chambers, Victoria Kiyokio, Amanda Dougherty, Alexa Elliott, Scott Gambon, Megan Golden, Caitlin Griggs, Alana Halloran, Sidney Hamilton, Christina Howe, Carly Keviny, Megan Kelly, Gregory Killian, James Landers, Ricky, Richard Little, Samantha Lynch, Sarah McLeod, Sam Malafronte, Ava McCormick, Colton McGrath, Gillian Mercier, Michelle Mencello, Troy Panico, Kim Fawn, Kimberly Reed, Joshua Riordan, Caitlin Shannon, Nicholas Sideropoulos, and Alessandro Vento. It's a really nice number to see go up from last year. So congratulations. So at this point, we'd be going into executive, executive session, not to return to open session. You need to do that by a roll call?
Yep.
Roll call. Ellen?
Yeah.
Paul?
Paul.
Kathy? So this meeting's adjourned?
Not to return.
Not to return to open session?
Correct.
Executive session next.
Thanks.
Oh, thank you. Same, thank you.
Congratulations, Sam.
Yeah, nice job.
Good luck.
Are we going into the other room?
The fighting?
Yeah.
Was the weather?
Are we going in the room?
Yeah.